Good evening and welcome to the Township of South Orange Village Planning Board Regular Meeting for Monday, May 4th, 2015. Jetta, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Colton Max.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Wazner.
Mr. Corrigan.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Chambers.
Here.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975, this is to state for the record that adequate
notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2015 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2014, and by filing said notice in the office of the village clerk. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the regular meeting held Monday, April 6th, 2015. These were circulated. Jetta, thank you very much for providing them. I did not attend the meeting, but will entertain any discussion or a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I think we can just probably do this by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And obviously, I abstain. First application to be heard for completeness, case number 241, Keystone Properties LLC, Block 2003, Lot 1, 184 Valley Street, preliminary and final site plan. Applicant is proposing to construct a three-story building.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Philip Neuer, N-E-U-E-R. Comes out Neuer. I am the attorney for the applicant, and I'm pleased to be here. I haven't been here in a lot of years. I was here, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but when Village Supermarket wanted to move the flagship store over to Third Street and what had been the Warnock, and your scarce restraints, restrictions stopped that, but it's been a lot of years and I'm glad to be back. We have reviewed the report submitted by Ms. Gruel. I had the pleasure of speaking with Susan on Friday. I've prepared a summary of our responses, if it will make that easier for the board to follow my responses to the report. I'm happy to distribute them.
Mr. Neuer, before we go through this, I just have a quick question for you. The planner has recommended that the application be deemed conditionally complete, subject to the applicant providing the remaining required materials. Is it your intent to suggest that some of those materials you might not wish to submit? Or, the only reason I ask is that if otherwise, we might just want to go to a vote on completeness. But I leave it to your discretion.
How can I say no to that?
Okay.
It depends on what the vote is.
My summary indicates that we're going to comply with everything that we are required to comply with. Let me please introduce to you, sitting in the second row, Mr. Andrew Davloris, the principal of Keystone, the developer, who is, of course, very interested in these proceedings. And since Shakespeare wrote that brevity is the soul of wit, I'll just be quiet.
I mean unless any-
Whatever questions you may have, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I mean, we're happy to ask questions, but I mean unless somebody is a difference of opinion from what the planner has offered, or the planner, or our professional has any questions, I'd be inclined to take a motion.
I'll move for completeness.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Jetta, you want to call the roll, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Completeness condition on the applicant providing the addition-
Subject to.
Yes.
Subject to all of the items indicated in the planner's report. Is that an accurate statement, Michael?
That's accurate. For clarity's sake, some of the items we indicate will be presented 10 days before the hearing, and there are a few items that we indicate can be conditions of the final approval, such as applying to the county planning board, Hudson Essex Soil Conservation District, or things that we would normally do after, would we get an approval after such an approval.
Right, I mean if you look at-
We're not contesting the obligation to do all of those things.
Right, no, the comments section on page four of the review by the planner specifies those items, and one of them is, you know, those things like the county planning board is not one of those conditions, but of course, we do always say that it has to be based upon obtaining all the necessary other approvals from other bodies. But this talks about the parking impact assessment, the telephone number of the record owner of property, identify any existing trees which may be impacted by the development, a landscaping plan if any landscaping is proposed, identify the location and use of all structures within 200 feet of the property, and details on waste and recycling storage. Is that-
The telephone number, I can provide to you the applicant's number, or the attorney for the owner, either one.
I'm sure you could, but those, I'm just saying, those are the items that would be the conditions.
I see, right, the list of recommendations, and in my summary, I key them back up to the paragraphs. Landscaping is shown on the drawing submitted by our architect, and yes, we will comply. We'll comply with all of this.
Very good. Then, Jetta, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, yes.
Just one thing I note as I glance through this. Number 17, it says there had been an underground, is this on? Okay. There had been an underground storage tank that had been removed, and it said, "See copies." Was approved by the South Orange Village code official. See copies. Was that intended to be attached, or?
It wasn't intended to be attached.
Oh.
Excuse me if I may.
Okay.
You can't talk, or they won't be able to hear you.
This was the approval that it was done in 2015.
Oh, okay. Are you planning on submitting-
You need to speak through the microphone, because they can't hear you at home if you're doing that.
And I guess the question is, are you planning on submitting that letter 10 days before?
Certainly.
That's all I would ask.
If satisfied with that, I'm happy to do that.
If the board is okay, but I think you should just have that information for purposes of the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, I certainly don't want to cut you off, if there's anything else. Okay?
I would ask one, then, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Neuer, I note that the application was signed by yourself. We would ask that it be signed by the applicant.
But I'm authorized to sign on behalf of the applicant.
We ask the applicant to sign the application, please.
Surely, I'll submit Mr. Davloris's signature this week, or another signature page. Thank you.
So I'll add those two items to the conditions of the approval, if it is approved. Okay, any other? Patrick, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, so if we can call the roll, please.
Mr. Colton Max.
Yes.
Mr. Lerner.
Yes.
Mr. Wazner.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yeah.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Yes.
If I may, just a couple of quick questions.
Do you have a date?
As to when this application will be heard, so that we're supposed to get notices out?
Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, 2015, unless there's any businesses carried over, which would seem to take more time. I don't see that that's, I don't know with 100% certainty if that's not going to be the case, but I would work on the basis that June 4th would be your meeting.
So that I can dispatch notices to the court.
Okay.
I submitted my form of notice. Are there any objections to the form that I submitted?
Sal, was there any issue with the form?
I haven't actually seen it, so.
Oh, I mean, I haven't seen it.
It was part of the application package, isn't it?
Yeah, I looked at the package, but I'm sorry, I missed that. If you'd like me to look at it, I'll be happy to look at it.
Does the board have a list of the other parties I'm supposed to notify utilities?
Not the board, you notify the clerk. Get it from the tax assessor, right?
I'm sorry.
You'll get the list from the tax assessor, right?
I got the list from the tax assessor, but it doesn't include parties like public service, or whomever peripheral we're supposed to notify. You'll email it to me? Thank you. Okay, June 4th, I'll see you all then.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, applications to be heard. Case number 231, Luther P. Turner Jr. and Hazel A. Turner. This is a continuation from the March 2015 meeting. Block 704, Lot 1, 14 Kingman Road. Minor subdivision. Applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots, with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. Welcome back, council.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you stated, this is a continuation from the March hearing with the express purpose to solicit testimony from a professional planner, in response to the village planner's minor subdivision review dated February 17th. Okay, so I'm going to have Mr. Williams step up.
Would you kindly raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony that you'll give to this board is the whole truth?
I most certainly do.
Please state your name and address, and spell your last name.
Certainly. Good evening, commissioners. My name is George Whedle Williams. Whedle spelled W-H-E-A-T-L-E. Williams with an S is W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. Switch it. Oops, sorry.
Can you give, please give this board the benefit of your experience as a professional planner?
Yes, again, good evening. I am licensed by the State Board of Professional Planners to practice in the state of New Jersey, also nationally certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
Can you please come closer to the microphone, please?
And he warned me that I was supposed to do that, so I'm sorry. I completed my graduate studies in city and regional planning at the Rutgers Graduate School, now the Blousing School of Planning and Policy, just to date myself a little bit. I've been practicing in the field of planning for a little over 25 years now, with a primary focus on land use, community and economic development planning, but I and my firm practice in a variety of fields of planning, including, but not limited to, master planning, zoning ordinances, redevelopment planning, and creative place making. I've appeared before numerous land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey, but this is my first time before this august board. I have appeared before the South Orange Zoning Board, and I've been accepted throughout the state of New Jersey, again, as an expert in the field. Last, but certainly not least, I volunteered at my hometown Zoning Board of Adjustment in Montclair, and I serve as board planner in several communities.
Thank you. I'd like you to accept Mr. Williams as expert witness on behalf of the Turner application.
Any objection? We accept.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. What work did you complete in preparing for this evening's testimony?
Yes, as part of our due diligence, we reviewed the site plan application that's before you this evening, as well as any attachments. We reviewed the local land use documents, including your zoning ordinance, the master plan, your smart growth plan, and I'm drawing a blank on one other, the Montrose Park District report. So we reviewed all of that, all of that in the context of municipal land use law, and of course, I've been to the site on several occasions, I'm very familiar with this area, but spent some time at the site and was there as recently as this evening. Also did some literature review and looked at the relevant case law that we think supports the relief that's being sought.
Thank you.
Finally, I did review Ms. Gruel's review memo.
Thank you. Please give your planning overview for this minor subdivision application.
Okay, as this board knows from prior testimony, this is a application for a minor subdivision, and relief in the form of a C variance for the lot width, both for the corner lot and the interior lot. For the record, this is property known as 14 Kingman Road, and identified in your municipal tax records as block number 704, lot number one, and we propose a subdivision which would create two lots, 1.01 and 1.02. There is a lot area of approximately 32,400 square feet, and that lot is developed by a two-and-a-half story dwelling, and that dwelling we propose to keep. With the subdivision, the two lots that would be created would have lot areas, both of which would exceed your lot area requirement of 77,500. The first lot, which I'll call the existing lot 1.01, would be 19,177 square feet, and the new lot, 1.02, would be 13,202 square feet approximately. Because the new lots would create a deviation from the strict application of your code's requirements for a minimum lot width, we are here again for the C variance. So for lot 1.01, the new lot width would be 116.56 feet on the South Orange Avenue side. It's a corner lot. On the Kingman roadside, the lot width will not change, so it's currently about 150 feet wide. That width will not change, and of course, in that sense, we continue to exceed the standard. The new lot, however, the interior lot, which will front on South Orange Avenue, still the same lot width requirement of 140 feet. The new lot width will be 80 feet at its narrowmost point, 100 feet as you get closer to South Orange Avenue. I know your code calls for a mean, so I'm not the best at arithmetic, but I would suggest that the mean therefore would be 90 feet for the new lot. Again, an application for the subdivision in all other aspects of your Balkan area standards, we comply. It is simply for the lot width, and I don't mean to diminish the importance of that, but we meet all the other standards, if not exceed the other standards, but if the subdivision is approved, as we hope it will be, we will need a variance for the deviation from your lot width. To give a bit of context for the testimony I'm required to give in terms of proofs and support of the relief, I did prepare several exhibits that are very straightforward. One is an aerial photograph with a zoning overlay, just to give you a sense of where we are in the context of the Montrose Park District. The other is a lot analysis to give you a sense of what the other lot dimensions and sizes are in the immediate area. And last but not least, a photo survey, and again, I know most of you know this area as well, if not better than I do, but just to give further context to my testimony.
Which one do you want to start with?
This one.
Okay. We're going to mark this exhibit as A4.
A4, hold on.
This is the aerial depiction with the overlay.
Good job.
The second would be A5, which are the photographs of the property. And A6 is a depiction of the lot sizes.
So just to begin with A4, a quick commercial, you'll note that it says R7 and R60, that's a omission on our part, it should be A, as you know, the code defines it as RA7, excuse me, so I apologize for that. The purpose of this exhibit is really just to give you a sense of how this property fits into the context of the larger district. You'll note that the yellow dotted line outlines the property in question, 14 Kingman Road. The fuchsia dotted line is intended to show you the proposed new lot. The maroon-ish color is the border of the Montrose District, and if you look to the left of the exhibit, the blue line just shows you our property in the context of the Tuxedo Park District across the street on South Orange Avenue. I think one of the significant parts is clearly we're within the RA75 district, and to give you a sense of the size of this lot, fronting on Kingman, and when I go through the pictures, you may begin to appreciate this a little bit more, but it's got significant width on Kingman, again, at 150 feet. The existing width on South Orange is 216, and I shared with you the breakdown of the widths once we do the subdivision. I'd also like to draw your attention, again, I know the professional testified last time went through this with you, but again, the subdivision line is, has like a little jug in it, so the lot width is supposed to be a mean, but you can see there are some wider portions of the new lot. I think most importantly, the wider portion is along South Orange Avenue, so I think that's important to keep in mind. Moving on to the next exhibit, and I'll move through these very quickly. Again, you know the area, and I do as well, but I have to tell you, you know, being back on the site as a planner and taking note of Kingman Road is a gorgeous streetscape. It is a dead-end street currently, and the first picture on the exhibit shows the pillars and the gates that were erected, making Kingman a dead-end street. Our property, or applicant's property, is immediately beyond that gate structure, and you can see that in figure two. The next two pictures were just intended to give you different perspectives of the property from Kingman Road, looking at the depth of the property and the width of its frontage on Kingman Road. The latter two pictures on that same page are just to give you further perspective on how deep this lot is, and if you're looking from Kingman, you can see the other house on South Orange Avenue, the very end of the property. Last but not least, that bottom right-hand corner picture just gives you a view from South Orange Avenue, looking in towards the north, across the property at our budding neighbor. Finally, if you turn to the second page, we took a picture and it says, "View of the sidewalk," and I know that sounds a little counterintuitive, we thought it was important just to give you a sense of how the character of this border of the Montrose District changes a little bit. You no longer have the bluestone curbing, you don't have the brick culverts or pavers along the street. It's just got a different feel than Kingman Road does. The next exhibit is our look at the lot sizes and dimensions, and I'm going to refer to this again when it's time to put the proofs on the record, but for the benefit of the commissioners, when we first took on the assignment and we thought about the width variance, we thought that all of the lots would be similar in size and dimension. As we began to do our field analysis, it became clear that that was not the case, and so we opted to do an overlay on the Google Earth aerial map and give you a sense of what the lot sizes are in the area. So it's pretty self-explanatory. The purple is the lots under 1,500 square feet, and I'll come back to that in a moment. The blue lots between 15,000 and 20,000. The green lots between 20,000 and 25,000. And then last but not least, the pink lots are the largest lots, and they are 25,000 square feet or greater. It's probably worth mentioning that when this subdivision was originally contemplated, I think the developer would hope that all of the lots would be no less than 20,000 square feet, and you can see from this exhibit that clearly that is not the case, there's a significant variance in lot sizes and dimensions. Because the application before you this evening is for a lot width, we tended to, we attempted to draw out those lots in the immediate vicinity that have a similar lot width. And so if you look at the purple shaded lots, they all have lot widths less than 100 feet. The ones that are clustered on Kingman Road diagonally across from our property going towards the north have lot widths of 60 feet each, and some of the houses in that area are varied, they're typically a little bit smaller than the houses on the larger lots as well. Diagonally across the street further to the north from them, the lot is 70, now I can't read anymore, 78 feet wide. And then if you look at Stanley Road, that lot has a curve, it's on a curved linear road, and it's with measures at approximately 99 feet, and we spoke to the village engineer just to make sure that our calculations of the widths were correct. Again, the lot width for lot 1.01, if this is approved, would remain at 150 along Kingman, and the lot width on South Orange Avenue would be the 116 for lot 1.01, and lot 1.02 would be 80 at the narrowmost, 100 at the wider portion, for a mean of what we're saying is 90 feet. That's the context for the deliberation, in my professional opinion. Under the municipal land use law, the board, as you know, can look at the request of relief in two contexts. The traditional C1 context, which allows you to consider hardships, look at the uniqueness and exceptional topography and shape of the property, and houses or structures lawfully thereon, or the flexible C2, which allows you to do a detriment versus benefit analysis and/or come up with a better zoning alternative. In my professional opinion, the relief sought is probably cognizable under both C1 and C2, but after reviewing this case carefully, I think the C2 context is most appropriate for the application. Just by way of citation, we went to the widths already, but the width standards come from Section 92 of your code, attachment number six. Section 92-3 of your code gives a definition, and that's where I got the mean from. Lot width is defined as the mean width of a lot measured at right angles to its depth, as opposed to a line, so again, for the new lot, I'm suggesting it's a lot width of 90. So with the proofs. The landmark case, and I'm sure you hear all the time coming, applicants coming before this board for C2 applications, is the Kaufman case. Kaufman, the planning board for Warren Township, and that was the court case that established the board's ability to consider the flexible C2 variance. What's interesting about the Kaufman case, and I use it in my testimony for a variety of applications for parking, signage, et cetera, is that when you read the case, it's almost spot-on for the application that's before you this evening. So I'd like to just share some of the facts and findings from the Kaufman case, and then I'll get into the recitation of our proofs for the request of release. In Kaufman case, applicant proposed a subdivision that would create two non-conforming lots, each with a width of 83 feet plus or minus a little bit, instead of the 100 foot that was required. Both lots were conforming as to the area, and one of the lots was more than double the size of the required area. Again, comment here, that's pretty much the fact pattern for our application. We comply with, applicant complies with all the other Balkan area standards, with the exception of the lot width. There was an existing residence in the Kaufman case on one of the lots, and an existing garage that was located 15 feet away from the sideline, as opposed to required 20 feet. We don't have that situation with the garage in our application, but we do have an existing structure, as I mentioned, a 2.5, a two-half story residence on the existing lot. The Kaufman court noted that the municipality had downzoned the area from 1.5 acre lots to 20,000 square foot lots, and that the grant of a variance in the case advanced the following purposes of zoning. Section A, the use of zoning to guide the use or development of lands to promote the general welfare. Section E, to establish appropriate population densities. Section G, to provide sufficient space to meet public needs. And moreover, it found that the negative criteria were met, as evidenced by the fact that the surrounding neighborhood consisted of a mix of older and newer residential homes, with a vast majority of lots having frontage width of less than 100 feet, and that properties located to the north and south of the applicant's lot each contained two residences despite the fact that the lots had not been subdivided. So again, a number of similarities between this landmark case and the application that's before you. The original contemplation for the Montrose Park was that the lots be 20,000 feet. feet. Currently, the area requirement is seven thousand five hundred square feet. Each of the subdivided lots would exceed that by a considerable amount. So with respect to, I'm sorry. So whereas the lot area has shrunken considerably from the time of Montrose, I will concede that the attention to the lot width has, is important to discuss. The lot width has gone from seventy-five to one hundred and forty feet, and so I'll talk about how this particular case, this particular application can be supported without having a substantial impairment to your zone plan. In terms of the proofs, under the Kaufman case, there are a couple of, is a litmus test. And the first is, it relates to a specific piece of property. And again, I think that is certainly the case in this application, which is why I took the liberty to look at the lot dimension and size pattern in the area and the property location in the context of the southernmost border of the Montrose District. Specifically, if there were, if this were one of the interior corner lots along the cross street, for example, I would suggest that the subdivision would be more problematic. Because of its location on the border of South Orange, the South Orange border of the district, however, and the characteristics of that section of the district, I think the board can take comfort in the relief specific to this piece of property, as opposed to a general statement for that relief. Has to be rooted in purposes of zoning. In my opinion, it's the same purposes of zoning that were articulated in the Kaufman case, section A, E, and G. And it has to have no substantial detriment to the public good. This is where I want to take a few moments just to explain our view of the detriment to the public good. The word substantial comes directly from the statute, and in my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. And here's why. We meet, again, all the other standards for Balkan area in this district, save the width. That width will be maintained on Kingman and will be decreased marginally on South Orange Avenue. This, too, is very similar to the Kaufman case, where it was decided that the application met all the other Balkan area standards, resulting in lots that would match the surrounding lot size and dimensions, and would only be quote-unquote "marginally deficient" in terms of lot width. That's exactly the same fact in this case. Furthermore, as I mentioned, I find Kingman Road to be stunning with its curved linear pattern, landscaping, et cetera. The change that we're requesting, both in terms of the subdivision and the lot width, will be transparent to the Kingman Road streetscape, and in my opinion, will not substantially change the South Orange streetscape. Again, the character of South Orange is very different, South Orange Avenue is very different to the Kingman Road streetscape. In terms of the benefits outweighing the detriments, there's a court case that talks about that, Bresman v. Gash, and it allows the board to consider an analysis of the benefits outweighing the detriments. In my opinion, I submit to this board that the relief being sought, the benefits outweigh the detriments. In this case, in the Bresman case, they talked about desirable visual environment, and found that allowing a smaller rear yard setback than required by the ordinance would enable the applicant to build a house more in keeping with the character of the area and more attractive alternate plans. In this application, it allows a subdivision that takes into consideration the structure that's lawfully thereon. Again, we have the two-and-a-half-story structure. It allows a subdivision line that juts a little bit, so that we come as close to meeting the lot width standards as possible without harming the house that's on the property currently. Again, in my opinion, the lot width would be marginally deficient, and there would be no substantial detriment to the public good. In terms of the second prong for the negative criteria, no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. In my opinion, there will be no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Why? I think, in my opinion, the zoning ordinance contemplates lot widths primarily for those lots that are in the interior of Kingman Road, where you have vistas of these corner lots, which are grand, and the intent is to maintain those widths. This lot is a little different, again, because of its location on the border of the Montrose District, and again, as I've mentioned a couple of times, fronting on South Orange Avenue. In that context, it's my opinion that there will be no substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, and that granting of the request of relief can be done with meeting the positive criteria or the benefit versus detriment analysis, and without any substantial detriment in either prong of the C two variance relief sought.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this time?
I'd like to start by asking our professionals if they have any questions for this, you know, for our presenter. Susan, Sal?
Go ahead, Susan.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, okay. I guess if you could respond a little bit more specifically about some of the master plan considerations that were quoted in our memo of February of two thousand and fifteen, that would be very helpful, because there were very specific statements and policy decisions that were emphasized in those planning documents. And I, you know, it relates to the second prong.
Right, I'm looking at responding to the planning comments on page two, or three, actually, which speaks to the character of the neighborhoods, and how the proposed subdivision affects the existing neighborhood. And if I'm missing anything, please just let me know. We looked at that comment, and again, I hoped part of my testimony would say that, it's my opinion that the intent of the plan objectives is to protect the character of the neighborhood. When I looked at the northern end of Kingman Road, there are several corner lots that are shown in my lot analysis, and I think that's what the plan contemplated. In my opinion, the character of the neighborhood on South Orange Avenue is a little bit different, and so I'm submitting to the board that it would not substantially change the character of that neighborhood, certainly not the Kingman Road character.
And within the reexamination report, was there any statement or suggestion that there was any distinction within the Montrose area, or any that would exempt or would lighten the standard as such along South Orange Avenue?
No, we reviewed the reexamination report carefully. I did not find a distinction. My distinction is based solely on our field survey and analysis, and suggesting to this board that, given the unique context of this site along the border and the streetscape for South Orange Avenue, that it would not be the same as subdivision on those corner lots that I mentioned earlier.
And just one last question. How do you, from a planning perspective, relate the proposed subdivision to the existing lot on the other corner of South Orange Avenue in Kingman? Which, according to your exhibit, your lot analysis, which I have to compliment you on your exhibits, they're very good. How that would relate, and does that have any impact on your planning assessment?
Are you referring to the lot directly across the street from us to the west?
That's correct. That's to the, yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
What's interesting is, when you drive or walk up and down Kingman Road, if you look to the east or the west, you're going to see very similar width. So our width, the applicant's width, is almost exactly the same as the width of the lot directly across the street from us on Kingman Road to the west. That viewscape will be exactly the same after the subdivision. So a passerby, a layperson, will not see a change in the Kingman Road streetscape. They'll still see that one hundred and fifty-foot width on both sides.
But it will be, it will change the streetscape along South Orange Avenue, correct?
Correct. Particularly, well, yes. This, the lot directly across the street on Kingman Road to the west takes up that entire area, and it's got a certainly, certain different flavor than when you go towards the east. Not shown clearly on this property, I think, on this exhibit, excuse me. I think our subdivision is more akin to the property to our immediate east, fronting on, I believe that fronts on Stanley, not on South Orange. I have to double-check that.
But visually, at this point, although it shows a technical subdivision, it really is not, has not been developed, that lot has not been developed.
As of now, no, it has not, but that's true.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That lot seems to be referring to the lot right to east of the lot.
That's correct.
And just to further explain, Ms. Grules is correct. That lot is technically subdivided, but it's currently undeveloped. So on the tax map, it shows up as divided like ours is, but to the naked eye, it's just an extension of the other property.
You had mentioned before a distinction between the South Orange Vista and the Kingman Road Vista, just to, again, clarify or reiterate what you stated before. Can you, again, address Ms. Grules' comments with regard to the Kingman Road Vista versus the South Orange Vista, and what your opinion is with regard to the South Orange Vista?
Certainly. Both important vistas, obviously, but the Kingman Road Vista is identified by a lot of very special treatments. It's the bluestone, and by the way, when I was doing my field analysis, I was taking notes and describing this Kingman Road characteristics, and I later looked at your documents and realized that what I was writing was almost exactly what was in the document. It's actually very beautiful. So it's got the bluestone curbing, it's got the brick pavers along the culvert, it's got the curved linear road pattern, and it's got a different landscaping feel than what you will find on South Orange Avenue. Moreover, the Kingman Road is a low-traffic road, whereas South Orange Avenue, as you know, is a, I believe, is a county road with high traffic, and none of the amenities that you see on Kingman Road in terms of the bluestone curbing, the brick culverts, some of the landscaping, et cetera. So it's a different feel and character than on Kingman Road.
Thank you. Did you have an opportunity to look at the design of the proposed house or home?
I did.
In your professional opinion, would it fit in with the designated historic district?
In my opinion, I'm not an architect, but in my opinion, based on looking at the proposed development for lot one point zero two and the surrounding area, I think it would be a nice fit, especially when you think about some of the carriage houses on Kingman Road.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners?
Any other questions from our professionals? Okay. So now I'll entertain questions from my fellow members of the board. Any questions for this witness?
I just have, I have one question, it might be more to you guys, just for some context, because, I mean, the lots that are indicated that are sixty feet or less, when did, I guess, like, has the lot width regulation, is that more recent? When did that go into effect?
I believe the ordinance was, I don't know the exact time, but the ordinance was changed
probably about, maybe ten years ago?
Ten years ago.
About ten years ago, when they increased the lot widths. The primary concern at that time was subdivisions of large lots and tearing down of houses to build multiple dwellings in order to try to protect the, you know, the homes and, you know, the historic houses in the areas. So they increased the required lot width to discourage the ability for developers to come in and buy, you know, a handful of houses that had one hundred and fifty, two-hundred-foot wide lots, and then tear them down and build three, you know, four, five, you know, houses, you know, in order to, you know, to basically protect the area.
And that's a specific objective in both the Smart Growth Plan and the reexamination report, and that was part of the tool to address that issue.
Michael, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. The new lot, the proposed lot, is there an existing curb cut onto South Orange Avenue at this time?
Not that I observed. I was just there today. It felt like there might have been at one time, but there's no current curb cut.
Okay, so this is a county road, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
All right, so you're going to be proposing a single residence with a new curb cut ostensibly onto a county road.
Correct.
Has any effort been made?
Well, I would ask that as a condition of any approval by this commission, that we get approval from the county. The county was noticed on the application, on this particular application, because it fronted on a county road.
Is there a planning objective, or is there a, one of the things that we're talking about, a positive and negative criteria that was talked about earlier? Is a negative criteria, or detriment to the community, if you will, opening up a curb cut or access to a county road like this to have a, is there a public danger or a, any kind of obstacle to opening up onto a county road?
That could be a planning objective. I'm not sure that I've heard any particular testimony that says it's safe or not safe, but certainly that can, that is a, would be a consideration. I'm not sure that you want multiple curb cuts necessarily along South Orange Avenue, which is, as noted, a high volume, higher volume, certainly than Kingman is, where you want people backing out or coming out onto, Sal may be able to answer that more specifically.
There certainly is a concern regarding location of the driveway and the ability for people to be able to turn around and pull straight out onto South Orange Avenue, as opposed to backing out onto South Orange Avenue. That's something that, from a safety perspective, the last thing you want to do is be backing out onto that street, because it is in that location, it's a two-lane road, it's, you know, a significant amount of volume during, you know, certain hours of the day. So that is a concern. I think in the prior testimony, they talked about the ability to, you know, perhaps, you know, be able to turn around. You know, the concern is, when there's several vehicles parked in the driveway, if they have a party or something like that, then that becomes a concern regarding safety, public safety. I don't know how that relates to the planning aspect of it.
Oh, it does. It definitely does. Public good, there are two prongs to the negative criteria. One is its impact on the master plan and the ordinance, and the other is the public good, which is the neighborhood and just the general public.
You know, I guess probably because of Michael's point, you know, if one did it, you start one, you have several curb cuts, it would really definitely have an impact on traffic, well, on South Orange Avenue, you know, and although it might not be a testimony from him, I still don't see how you, how we have a design that allows cars to back up to South Orange Avenue. It just doesn't seem to make any sense when there's no to do a different type of driveway or turnaround.
What I'm seeing here also is a lot across the street from Kingman, which is another large lot with a lot of bunches on Kingman Road, and also has significant depth, depth that would allow it to have, I want to say, a similar subdivision as the present applicant.
That's the problem.
Would allow another, another curb cut onto South Orange Avenue, which is a, personally, you know, I look at it as a concern, a safety concern, and it's not a benefit to the community, it's a detriment to the community.
Right, right. Almost as if they should have been subdivided.
I think so. I mean, I'm not here to tell them.
I know, I understand that. I have the exact same concern.
Okay. Michael, is that the end of your line of questioning? Okay. Mike, now the next Michael. Thank you, Michael.
Obviously, Kingman Road-
Obviously, Kingman Road is closed. I haven't seen it opened up, other than they did open it up the other day for a few hours. I haven't seen it open up in 10 years. Can somebody have the rationale as to why was Kingman Road onto South Orange Avenue closed?
The gates were put up, I'm guessing, was it right call, maybe about 12, 13 years ago. The, the purpose of that was to prohibit cut-throughs, basically, in the neighborhood. People avoiding the traffic signal at Center Street and making a left turn onto, say, Hamilton, cutting around, and then the left turn onto South Orange Avenue to avoid the traffic signal. So, that was done, and I believe the, you know, the neighborhood and the, the people in the area were, you know, on board with it. So, the gates were installed. They are, you know, they are accessible by police and fire if they need to get in there. I mean, they can open the gates and get in there if they need to, but the idea was to prohibit the traffic flow that was going through. The other cut-through was coming if you were heading westbound on South Orange Avenue, people making the right through, onto Stanley or onto Kingman to avoid, again, the intersection at Center Street to cut over, you know, to head, head north on Center Street. That's, that was the intent of those gates.
And just one last question, dealing with the existing home that's on, that will remain, what are the plans for that?
Well, we could get testimony from the applicant shortly. I want to remind the commissioners that at the last hearing, the architect provided information with regard to the driveway and the ability to turn around, and it was demonstrated on his plans. So, the issue of backing out, I would think was addressed. Obviously, you know, if there's a party going on or something like that, that would be an exception, but generally speaking, there was sufficient room on the plans to allow for a turnaround, so cars could drive in, turn around, and drive out without backing out. Previous testimony also demonstrated that there are similar, well, there are other properties along South Orange Avenue as well that have egress and ingress onto South Orange Avenue. So, I just want to remind you that that was some of the testimony previously given.
Thank you, counsel. Any other questions from my fellow board members? Okay. Substantive question or legal question?
It's a substantive question having to do with what Susan had brought up in her memo, and I'd ask if the planner could address what, you looked at page three, and there's a comment about number three, talks specifically about the Montrose Historic District. And are you able to respond to that comment about this lot?
Number three, on page three?
On page number three?
Yes.
Number three.
Number three. Okay, I'm not sure, I can definitely comment, but I want to make sure I answer the question, and I'm not sure I understand the question. Are you saying in addition to the testimony offered thus far?
Right. Do you have anything that would specifically address that comment about the lot being within the Montrose Historic District?
No more so than I already have. So, in my introduction, I used an exhibit that clearly indicated and verified that we are located within the Montrose Historic District. I spoke about the original developer of the Montrose District Park District thinking about, contemplating larger lots of no less than 100 by 200 feet, and then I segued into the current reality of the Montrose Historic District with the different lot sizes and So, my testimony would remain the same, that the proposed subdivision meets all of the Balkan Area standards except the width in that district, and that the subdivision itself, given the, the analysis that I provided, the description of the, the area, particularly along the southernmost border of the Montrose District Park, would not take away from the character of the Montrose Historic District. I think I also added that, in my opinion, the, the master plan and the ordinance really, when they're thinking about these corner lots, certainly were contemplating the corner lots at the cross street, which have these, these vistas that are a little bit different, in my opinion, than what you see on South Orange Avenue. So, again, in my opinion, this subdivision could be granted without taking away from the character of this district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
So, at this point, we'll take questions from members of the public. If you have a question, would ask that you please, you can address through the microphone there to make sure that everybody at home can hear. If you could please identify yourself by name and address. This is for questions of the, of this witness only. There will be opportunity for public comment after all of the witness testimony has been given. So, at this point, are there any questions for the applicant's planner who is here at this moment? Guests, please come forward. Again, please identify yourself by name and address.
Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street, South Orange. Hello, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Mr. Williams, you testified that Kingsland is a dead end, is that right?
I did.
Kingman, excuse me, is a dead end. And you testified that South Orange Avenue is a county road, correct?
I did.
A busy road, correct?
Certainly busier than Kingman, yes.
And it has sidewalks, is that right?
South Orange Avenue?
Yes.
It does.
And would you agree that there are many more passers-by from this lot and this section of the Montrose Historic District on South Orange Avenue than there are on Kingman?
You mean pedestrian passers-by?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure. I would guess that's possible.
Would you agree that there are many more cars driving by this aspect of the Montrose Park Historic District on South Orange Avenue than on Kingman?
That one's a little easier. I would definitely submit that there probably are much, many more.
And those cars would have both drivers, and at least some of them would have passengers that would be seeing the aesthetics that were set up by the developers of the Montrose Park Historic District, correct?
They would definitely be passing by and be, see the houses on South Orange Avenue.
And the...
Perhaps not Kingman, but they would definitely see South Orange Avenue.
Right. Well, I mean, each of the streets in that area of the, the Montrose Park Historic District either dead ends or comes out to South Orange Avenue, correct?
Right. I think the distinction is if you look to the south, towards Tuxedo, I mean, it's signed and it's open. The only distinction I'm making, and I don't want to debate the point, but when you drive west on South Orange Avenue, if you do happen to look to your right, you will see the road, but I'm not sure you recognize that it's the Montrose Historic, Montrose Park Historic District, as opposed to the left where you see Tuxedo. That's...
And you, you would agree that if you do look out the window at the Montrose Park Historic District as you're traveling west on South Orange Avenue, you would basically see large houses on large lots, notwithstanding that there is some variation of the size of the lots? Is that correct?
I'm not sure. I know for our property, you'll see the tree line first. I'm not sure that you see the house, certainly when the foliage is in full, you know, full effect. The property to the west of us has fencing, but I think, and landscaping, but I think it's a little more visible than the property that we're, we're here for.
And you would agree that as you travel west on South Orange Avenue, over the border from Newark into South Orange, there's a completely different character on the right side, which is the Montrose Park, whether it's the, the large lots, the large houses, the trees, even if you can't see the house? I mean, there's a real distinction, right?
Between what and what?
As you travel over the border from Newark into South Orange and look to the right of the Montrose Park Historic District.
So, I'm sorry, so you're looking, the distinction between just the border change or...
Yeah, the border change. At the border change and then continuing on South Orange Avenue, looking right to the Montrose Park District. It's, it's very significant, isn't it? It's a very significantly different aesthetic.
There's definitely a difference. I'm not sure the difference is the lot sizes to the normal passerby because of the screening, but yes, there is a difference.
Okay. I mentioned three things, not just the lot size. I said lot size, large homes, and screening where you can't even see the homes.
And again, I'm not sure the large homes are immediately visible to, certainly the vehicular traffic, traveling west on South Orange Avenue, looking to the north, but yes, there's a, there's a change in character.
And are you aware of the fact that there were two developers of the Montrose Park Historic District, one being Kingman and one being Montrose?
I am.
I mean, both, rather. And what role did large lots and, and restrictions about subdivisions play in the, in the design of Montrose Park?
Well, the original contemplation for Montrose Parks was to have significantly large lots, as I mentioned in my testimony, 100 by 200, to create an estate-type feel. And again, the application before the board this evening meets the lot area dimensions and actually exceeds, even after subdivision, the lot area dimensions.
I take your point on the Kaufman case. My question to you is more the, the exception that I think you would, you're asking the board to recognize for border properties. Would you agree that accepting a border property from that, I'm going to describe it as a restriction on subdivisions, whether executed as an actual restriction or a very large width, is a, is a violation of both the, the spirit and letter of the Montrose development as well as the zoning ordinance?
No, I think you have to look, I, I don't think, I submit, you have to take each application on its own merit, and I, for the reasons I mentioned earlier, I think, I submit that this application would not, if the subdivision, remember, subdivision is permitted, we meet all the other Balkan Area standards, the only deviation is for the width, and that width is really for, for the Lot 1.01, the width on South Orange Avenue, the width for that lot on Kingman will remain in excess of the requirement. And then for Lot 1.02, it, if you look at the mean, it'll be 90 feet width as opposed to 140, and I think, given the testimony I've offered already, that is a viable exception to the Montrose standards.
And you have agreed in response to Ms. Gruehl that the, or maybe it was Mr. Rosner, the, the property directly across the street to the west could be subdivided if the same, what I'm describing as exception that you're promoting, applied. Is that correct?
I don't think the question was posed to me, and I don't know if I said that.
Okay.
I think the question that was posed to me was about dimensions, and I had feared that it is very similar, certainly in its lot width, and it's also a larger lot than the lot in question.
So, would the answer to the question then be that, yes, that would be subdividable in the same fashion and for the same reason that you're offering, that is, it's South Orange Avenue as opposed to Kingman?
I think I understand where you're going. I didn't look at that lot and analyze it the same. I really focused our analysis on Lot 1.14, Kingman Road, so I'd have to do a little further analysis. Clearly a large lot, so I would concur with that. Similar with its butting the southern border of the Montrose Historic District, but again, I did not analyze that lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness? Yes, please come forward. Again, if you could please identify yourself by name and address. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Jerry O'Leary, 18, Kingman Road, South Orange. Evening, Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
So, you testified earlier in connection with, pardon me one second. You testified earlier with respect to the various documents that were reviewed, that among the documents she reviewed was the master plan?
The reexamination report of the master plan, that's correct.
Yeah, which reexamination report?
2011.
Okay. Did you look at the 2006 reexamination report?
I did as well.
Okay.
I don't have that one with me, but...
Mr. Chairman, may I provide the witness with a copy of the 2006 report, which he said he didn't have with him, but that he reviewed? So, I want to ask him a few questions about it.
Is there a problem with that? Are, are any of the provisions that you're referring to, Mr. O'Leary, superseded by the subsequent reexam?
No, Mr. O'Leary, they're not superseded by. They are actually adopted and incorporated, but they are more explicit with respect to some of the issues that are implicated by today's application. We need them in the record at the, at a minimum. Because there's an explicit reference in the 2006 reexamination report to lot widths and the importance of lot widths with respect...
Without you giving testimony, yes, you may, you may proceed as you request. Now, Mr. Williams, I'm referring now to the, the master plan reexamination.
Mr. O'Leary, just a quick question. You handed me 2011. Did you intend, do you mean...
It was a test.
Now, you reviewed this document in connection with your testimony here today, did you not, sir?
We did.
Okay. And I'm just for the record, referring to the master plan reexamination report, township of South Orange, Essex County, New Jersey, adopted November 2006, prepared by Hired Gruehl and Associates. If you could turn, sir, to page seven of that report. It's a section entitled Residential Areas and Zoning. Do you have that?
I do.
Okay. And you read this section of the report, did you not?
Did.
Okay. And I just want to state for the record, this, this section under residential areas and zoning states, the 2000, the 2000 reexamination report reiterated the recommendations in the 1991 land use plan, that zoning should reflect the predominant land use pattern in residential areas, particularly as it relates to minimum lot size, with the stated intent of maintaining the existing pattern of development and not permitting subdivisions in these neighborhoods that would undermine the established neighborhood character. Do you see that, sir?
I do.
Then it goes on to state, in particular, it was stated that the historic character of the Montrose character should be preserved by discouraging subdivisions and demolitions. Since 2000, in an effort to achieve these recommendations, the village enacted revised lot width requirements in the village's RA-700, RA-75, RA-60, and RA-50 zoning districts. Do you see that, sir?
I, I do.
And the application for the property issued here today is RA, within RA-75, is it not?
That is correct.
Okay. So, you would agree with me, sir, that a clear, critical objective of the village in establishing the 140-foot width requirements was a means to achieving the preservation of the historic character of Montrose in general, would you not?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And then it goes on to state, it is clear, however, that maintaining the existing pattern and character of development within the village's residential neighborhoods remains a critical land use objective in the village, as is the desire to maintain and promote the village's racial and economic diversity. You see that?
I do.
Does this provision that I just read to you make any distinction between towns within the historic district, between properties within the historic district that are located on the edge or border, I think, as you described it, versus properties that are located anywhere else within the district?
And I think that's, I'll answer your question, but I think that's where the board planner was going with her query also. And I, in my response to the board planner, I try to distinguish the two streets because they go directly, in my opinion, to the character of that particular section of the Montrose District. District. And for the reasons I provided earlier, I think they are definitely different characters of along South Orange Avenue and Kingman Road, and that goes to my discussion about the uniqueness of this property and the uniqueness of the requested relief vis-à-vis the width for lot 1.02 in particular.
Right, but in answer to my question, sir, this particular reexamination report does not make the distinction that you just pointed out, does it?
No, I did.
You talked a little about the distinction between the, I think, the vista that exists on Kingman Road and South Orange Avenue. Do you recall that testimony, sir?
I do.
You talked a little bit also with respect to that distinction about the properties existing to the east of the property where this application is sought. And I think you noted that there was one or more properties that had already been subdivided to the east. Is that right?
I referred, there was an exhibit that I shared that you may not have had a chance to look at that shows the lot configuration, sizes, and dimensions along Kingman Road going back towards the street behind us to the east, and the lot that is directly abutting our property to the rear or to the east is technically a subdivided lot.
Now, are you aware that that subdivision is a pre-existing, non-conforming subdivision to the 2000 ordinance requiring the 140-foot widths?
I would not be surprised.
Why would you not be surprised, sir?
We didn't do the research on when the subdivision occurred, so I wouldn't have an opinion or be surprised either way.
Well, we just read in that provision I read to you from the reexamination report that since 2000, in an effort to achieve these recommendations, the village enacted revised lot widths, including the lot width for RA-75, which is what we're dealing with today, right? Is that right?
I'm sorry, what's the question again?
You have to answer verbally.
What's the question again?
The question was that the RA-75 that we're dealing with today, the lot widths that are currently applicable, were specifically enacted in order to achieve the objectives that we just read about, that I just read into the record.
That is correct. And the reason for the land use analysis, the lot analysis that we provided was for the benefit of the public and the board to see that there, when you talk about the detriment to the public good and the character, the reason I spoke about the vistas and the existing lot pattern was to show that if the subdivision were granted, it would not be out of keeping with the character of the Kingman Road lot patterns.
But the existing lot pattern...
And then parenthetically, if you look directly behind our property, it's almost a mirror image of the subdivision we're proposing, albeit a technical subdivision. But when you look at that lot subdivision, it looks very similar to what's being proposed.
But the existing lot pattern you're referring to, sir, includes the smaller lots to the east, which we've already agreed were pre-existing, non-conforming lots, correct?
Correct. All the lots in the analysis that we provided, I would assume predate the ordinance standard that you're referring to, primarily because none of the houses are newer than 10 years. So all the lots, I think there were six or seven lots in the exhibit that I showed that all had less than the lot width that we're proposing, I would assume go are pre-existing, non-conforming lots.
And you would agree that the lot width requirements for RA-75 were enacted explicitly in response to, according to this reexamination report, the onslaught of subdivisions that were occurring within the Montrose Historic District that they were trying to address and stop, correct?
Or concern or fear of the onslaught of subdivisions.
Let me ask you this, sir. Applying the criteria that you used today, and I think Ms. Bauer touched on this earlier, but I think it's worth exploring further, the property immediately to the west, and again, we're dealing with the north side of South Orange Avenue, has a long, I think you said approximately 150-foot, if not longer, border along South Orange Avenue?
No, I didn't speak to the width along South Orange Avenue. I said that the dimensions were similar to ours. It's actually a larger lot, and on my map, it's called out. It's one of the larger lot size models on Kingman. The 150-foot measurement that you're referring to, I think, was in respect to the lot width for our property along Kingman Road.
That's correct, sir. I apologize. It's actually much longer, if you look at it from the aerial view from the pictures that were provided. But applying your analysis, and I understand from what you say earlier that every property has to be taken on its individual merits, but applying the analytical framework that you've applied for your testimony here today, the property immediately across the street, again, to the west of, on South Orange Avenue and Kingman Road, the other corner property, what is to stop that homeowner from seeking to subdivide his property, which by all accounts and from aerial review, is larger than the total area of the property at issue here today, from subdividing his property, sir?
I didn't analyze that property. I can tell you that from my visit to the site on a number of occasions, the house on that lot is considerably larger than the house on the applicant's lot, and that may have some impact on the ability to subdivide it, but I wouldn't go any further than that in terms of response to your question, because I just did not look at that lot as carefully.
But you did look at other surrounding lots, did you not, in doing your analysis?
In terms of lot dimensions, yes. And the exhibit we looked at, to give the board a sense of the existing lot dimension and size pattern, looked at all the lot dimensions and sizes.
And are some of the lots, and I didn't have the privilege of looking at some of the exhibits that were sent around, but are some of the lots that were part of your analysis lots on the south side of South Orange Avenue?
They are.
And that's in a different...
Oh, I'm sorry, the south side of...
South side of South Orange Avenue, Tuxedo Park.
No, we did not.
Okay. So the lots that you used for comparison were all on the north side of South Orange Avenue?
That's correct.
But you didn't include the lot that's directly across the street from the lot in issue?
I did.
And it's your testimony that subdividing this lot would not impact the vista on South Orange Avenue heading west from a lot that you're suggesting goes from 140 to 90 to a lot that's well in excess of 200 feet immediately to the west across the street?
You're speaking to the applicant's lot?
Correct.
That's correct.
And you find that that's consistent in terms of the overall vista that's presented on South Orange Avenue heading west?
Yeah, my testimony, I believe, was that there would be, it would not substantially be a detriment to that vista, and that the vista of South Orange Avenue is different than that of Kingman Road.
Right, but the vista of South Orange Avenue would basically result in a change from a lot that's in excess of 140 feet to a lot that goes from 90 feet to another lot that goes approximately 90 feet as well to a lot that's over 200 feet. And you don't think that changes the vista?
No, and again, if you look at the lot configuration, sizes, and dimensions, there are a variety of lot sizes and dimensions in that two-block area, so...
Right, and a lot of those are pre-existing, non-conforming, are they not? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. Sure.
Just one other quick question.
Sure.
You reviewed a lot of documents, Mr. Williams, and you've identified those. Did you have an opportunity to review the township of South Orange Village's Historic Preservation Commission report that was published as a public notice in response to this application for a certificate of appropriateness? Did you ever read that?
I don't think so. What's the title of the document?
The document was a decision that was issued by the Historic Preservation Commission in response to an application for a certificate of appropriateness?
No, I did not read it.
You never read that? Okay. I just want to ask you a question about one of the provisions in this opinion.
You can testify about it. Are you, you're asking him a question about it?
I am, I am asking him a question.
I'm sorry? Mr. O'Leary, he hasn't, he hasn't read this, nor has he testified about it. We're going to ask questions about what he testified to.
And is it a resolution?
I am going to, I think it relates to what he testified to, Mr. Dwyer.
You want to tell us why?
I'm assuming it's the resolution from the Historic Preservation Commission that was appealed. I don't understand the significance of the, what the public member is trying to solicit.
Is that what it is, Mr. O'Leary?
That is what it is. Actually, it's what I described it as, the Township of South Orange Village Historic Preservation Commission opinion in response to the application for a certificate of appropriateness, which was denied unanimously by the board by opinion dated February 18, 2014. And one of the things that it addresses is the issue with lot width.
I think we have to ask you not to go there, because, as you know, there was an appeal. And it was overturned on appeal, or the Board of Adjustment ruled otherwise.
All right, I respectfully disagree, but understand.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public? And you'll still have an opportunity to present a statement of your own. Any other questions from members of the audience? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, do you have any other witnesses you wish to bring?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Just the applicant to address some very simple and minor, not minor, some queries that the commissioners had concerning the existing structure and plans for the structure.
Okay, please. She was already sworn in, right?
I believe she did.
You testified already, just to remind me.
No.
No, so then you need to be sworn in. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you'll give to this board is the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Hazel Turner, 14 Kingman Road, South Orange.
Thank you.
When you, one of the questions from the commissioners is what is the current structure on the property? What do you plan to do with the current structure on the property? Your home, your house.
My current home? Oh, I'm sorry. We plan to sell that one, and we plan to, we plan to sell that house and live in the new house.
Have you made any recent improvements on the existing home?
Just the retaining wall.
Did you do anything else?
No.
Anything on the porches or anything?
Just the retaining wall, you know, that's it.
Now, when you purchased the property, was it your intent to subdivide in the future?
Yes, it was.
Were you aware that the property was designated as a contributing structure in the Montrose Park Historic District?
No, I was, I was not aware.
Now that you're aware of that historic designation, is it your intention to build a dwelling that conforms to the design element?
Definitely, yes.
I have no further questions.
Any questions from our professionals? Okay, any questions from members of this board? Yes, Michael.
Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Good evening.
Just a second. When did you purchase the house that you live in now?
1987.
That's all.
Okay.
Any other questions from members of this board? Okay, again, questions from members of the public for this, for the owner, for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Turner, for your testimony. Counsel, do you have any other witnesses to present?
No, I don't. But just for the record, the architect is here. If the commissioners have any questions, but I'm not presenting him as a witness this evening. He gave sufficient, I believe, sufficient testimony at the last hearing.
Okay. All right, well, with that, it's now, I think, our opportunity. Thank you, counsel. I think it's now time to take any comments or statements from members of the public. At this time, we'll entertain anybody who wishes to come up and speak to this. Again, if you wish to speak, please provide your name and address. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Well, we, yeah, I'm sorry.
This was for comments, not for questions?
This is not for questions. This is for statements, comments, but there, the portion of the meeting which deals with witnesses and witness testimony is now complete, so, no, this is not for questions and witnesses. Yes, please.
I should have asked Ms. Turner a question. I can ask a question.
Good evening. Janine Bauer, 416 Clark Street, South Orange. I just want to make two really quick points, and I think the most salient one is that the border areas of the Montrose Park Historic District are actually the most important areas of that district, partly because they do signify to all the passersby and drivers and passengers going by, I mean, the pedestrians as well as the drivers and passengers and vehicles, that they've come into someplace special that was set out actually in the middle 1800s and is obviously still very important and significant to this village by virtue of the fact that just 10, 15, and 20 years ago, we were still continuing to revise our zoning code to enforce the, the character of the district. If you allow the fact that a property is on a county road or on a corner of a street or a dead-end street or something like that, then, then it will become like every other place. And not only is South Orange not like every other place, but Montrose Park is really one of the most significant things about this town. And so the same could be argued, and I think to some extent has been argued, either before this board or the other board, with respect to the other corner properties, corner of Center, corner of Montrose and Scotland, at Mary Lawn. This is just another place. And if you allow the type of erosion that's being requested here by subdivision to occur, then that will just be a slope that we will slide down because it'll be the next house because that lot will not be very easily distinguished from the South Orange Avenue, and then the next one, and the next one, and so on and so forth. So that's, that's the major point. The minor point that I want to make is that despite the, the character and the design and many of the features that, in fact, Mr. Williams testified to that make Montrose different and special and historic, there aren't actually design standards. So the concept that the new house is going to be built with respect to, or respecting the design, that's not really possible. The houses within the Montrose Park follow all different types of design. The house will be a more modern structure, regardless of whether they, it's a modern structure that's made to look more historic, which often, you know, achieves the opposite result that you would like it to. So I just want to remind the board that it's not like there's some design code out there that they're going to have to follow. There's not. And as you probably all know from your training and experience on this board, you know, aesthetics come into play with respect to the things that you're considering tonight, that is, the zone plan and the public good and detriment to the public. But as for design standards or design code itself, we don't have one. So they can build anything they want. I'm not suggesting that they will not build something tasteful, but, but that's not something that you should rely on. Thank you.
Okay. Any other statements from, okay, I see two people walking up. Okay, very good. Please identify yourself by name and address, please.
Sure, Amy Don. I'm a commissioner on the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm speaking on behalf of the commission.
Your address, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. 521 Center Street.
Thank you.
And I live in Montrose Park. I'm a past president of the Montrose Park Historic District Association, and I just wanted to read on behalf of the HPC part of our ruling on this case. And I just want to remind you that it was overturned by narrow grounds, and it had to do with a difference between the two ordinances, and unfortunately, there was a discrepancy between those, and we clarified those in a draft ordinance that's now coming into effect. So based upon the application exhibits and testimony placed before the commission, the commission finds that the applicants have not met the minimum requirements of the ordinance compelling a denial of the reliefs requested. The applicants seek to subdivide an existing lot and to construct a new house on one of the new... the newly created lots. An integral part of the character of the district is the large lot sizes. Subdividing the existing lot into two smaller lots would be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the district. The applicants failed to provide any significant information about the home to be constructed, although I know today or in the last testimony, additional information was provided. The applicants, let's see. So that the Commission could evaluate whether the proposed home met the criteria in the ordinance. The applicants presented a concept plan, but the applicant testified that it was simply an illustration of what they might propose to build and that the applicants did not want to be bound by that plan. Even if they had agreed to be bound by that plan, it did not provide sufficient detail for the Commission to determine what the proposed home would be in keeping with the criteria set forth in Section 9 of the ordinance. The new home would be closer to the existing home and the O'Leary home on the adjacent property that then is typical in the district. Based on the record before it, the Commission cannot accept the argument by the applicants that constructing a home at that location will provide an appropriate aesthetic view at this gateway location to the district. In summary, based upon the information provided to it, the Commission finds that the applicant has not satisfied the ordinance criteria for the relief requested. The record supports the conclusion that creating this smaller lot is inconsistent with the historic intent and purpose of the district and that a home constructed on that location on that smaller lot would also be inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the district. I attended a previous hearing, and I do want to say that the architect was unable to describe the character of that home, could not describe it in terms of how it would fit into the district. I also want to remind this Board that in the past, the purpose of the lot width ordinance, which was passed by this Board, was to prevent such subdivisions. So that it was the ruling of this Board and the intent of this Board, when this ordinance was adopted, the lot width ordinance, that this type of subdivision would be prevented. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or statements? I see, you may go ahead. You got the deferral.
Thank you, sir. And members of the Board, I'm Bob Adler, 120 Ralston Avenue in Montrose Park Historic District. At the time that the, I hadn't planned to mention it, but at the time that the Zoning Board of Adjustment reversed the Historic Preservation Commission, I was on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. We reversed solely on a procedural ground, and we did not take issue with the Historic Preservation Commission's determination as to whether or not this is, this application would be in keeping with Montrose Park. Mr. Williams mentioned the Kaufman case, which I don't know, but he did mention that in that case, the town had downzoned. Specifically, for this application, where they need a variance for a lot width, the town has upzoned. And, and there has been testimony about that and, and why it was upzoned. That is, that we made the lot width requirement greater to prevent subdivisions. Mr. Williams also mentioned that one of the benefits will allow building, building more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and it couldn't possibly be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood than not building. Right now, the character of the neighborhood is large lots, and there's an older house that the Turners have on the lot, and I don't see how building anything could be more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Traffic was mentioned as an issue for the Board. The Board mentioned it, and I think it's an appropriate thing to be concerned about. If I recall correctly, and this isn't, it's testimony of, only of my recollection, that the architect had testified that people don't park in their garages, they park in front of them. And, and there was a big question about turnaround, and it was, that was never resolved, as I recall. So that because the town, South Orange, has been very careful to change zoning to prevent these subdivisions, I don't see anything in this application other than "I want to do it," that, that speaks for the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments from any members of the public?
Good evening, Jerry O'Leary, 18 Kingman Road. Just to reiterate and touch on what Ms. Bauer said and those following her, this application and the analysis provided in support of it could be applied, in my view, and I think in the view of any rational person, equally to pretty much any property within the Montrose Historic District. To look at surrounding properties and to highlight non-conforming pre-existing properties and the lot widths to support an application for a variance regarding a zoning ordinance that was enacted explicitly to stop the subdividing that resulted in the properties that are being used in the analysis is somewhat cyclical and doesn't really further the objectives, the land use objectives. And obviously, as the report I read from earlier indicated, a critical land use objective that's reiterated in the examination, the reexamination reports of 2006, 2011 specifically says that the land, the width requirements, the width ordinances were enacted explicitly to prevent precisely what's being attempted here. And I would submit to this Board that there's nothing that furthers the objectives of the reexamination report and the master plan that's been articulated here today. So I respectfully submit that the application should be denied.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other question, any other, excuse me, comments from members of the public? Can we accept evidence from them? Sure, you can, if you want to. Yeah, please.
Amy Dawn, 521 Center Street, South Orange. I just wanted to read you two articles that were in the News Record from 2003, as well as the publication.
I'm sorry, could you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry, as well as, these are two articles from the News Record from 2003 and the June 5th, 2003.
Still, pull the microphone down towards you. It'll probably, yeah, there we go.
Okay. I have two articles from the News Record from when the, this Board approved the ordinance, the lot width ordinance, and also the publication on June 5th, 2003. And the articles here state that clearly we do not want to see a pattern of subdivision where people want to put up multiple dwellings, trustee Mark Rosner said last week. Trustees approved the zoning change on May 28th, that was 2003. And another quote, that's to prevent subdivision of RA 100 lots. And then it was also noted in the article that I presented a petition from the historic district with 277 signatures to Village Hall, indicating that there is a village support for the review of the zoning ordinance, especially in relationship to minimum lot size. And as well, there is a letter that accompanied that petition. So I'd like to present that past evidence.
Give it to Chad, I assume. Right, what's the letter, please?
Oh, the letter was, the accompanying letter to the petition on behalf of the Montrose Park Historic District. I can read that if you want.
No, normally, the Board doesn't accept petitions, so I'm not sure if that letter should be accepted either.
Okay, well, I'm just noting it in the article, so I'll just take that out, but I'll give you the articles, okay?
So that'll be included in the record. I'm sorry. We're going to mark those as objectors exhibit number one. Chad? Any other, any other comments from members of the public? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now it's open for discussion by members of the Board. I'll entertain discussion on the subject.
Can I just say, I am, it's kind of a general topic, I just, both, everything I've heard tonight's been very inspiring in some ways. I love the passion that everyone's bringing to the table, both sides. I just, just want to state the appreciation of the detail that the planner gave and also the comments that were from the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any comments, thoughts, discussion about the substance of the application as well?
I guess one thing I want to bring up is, so I actually, I just spent quite a bit of time looking online at, you know, the Google Maps. We have a program called Property Pie, where I was able to get an aerial view. But I was also, I went out and took a walk up and down the street. And, you know, both the applicant and the residents do make very good points in the sense that I do think there are very different characteristics between South Orange Avenue and once you go inside the neighborhood. But I think those are characteristics that absolutely make South Orange distinctive when going west into town. And I, my personal belief, I think, you know, dividing these lots would take away a lot of the character when you're driving into town and would be a detriment to the, to the area, so.
Any other comments, any other discussion? Yes.
I also want to commend the planner. I thought he has some very well reasoned arguments. I appreciate that. Also, the residents of the Montrose Park District came out today to give also some very well reasoned arguments and some historical perspective. From my part, I can see both sides make some very, very good points. Personally, I am always, I'm worried whenever, anytime somebody opens up a driveway into a major thoroughfare like South Orange Avenue. And even with the turnaround, it always concerns me, South Orange Avenue is four lanes, it's a double yellow line street. There's issues of making, if you're coming from town, making a left into the driveway, you've got to come across two lanes of traffic and stopping traffic behind you as well. So that has an issue for me. I also hear the concerns of some of the neighbors about opening up a, the path to other possible subdivisions in similarly situated building lots, and that concerns me as well. So those are some things that are weighing on my mind right now, so thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts or, okay. Okay, so hearing none, I would, I will entertain motions or a motion. I will just say that it's, I think, better and more appropriate for us to have a motion that we vote on one way or the other, even if it's to vote it down, if that is the will of this Board. So I would appreciate it if somebody would, would make such a motion and second it so that we can have a vote for the record, please.
Want to say push into motion and second?
Well, somebody should make a motion perhaps to accept the application as presented.
Let me just ask, if you make the motion, are you allowed to vote no? Mr. Dwyer?
Yes, you are.
Okay. And in respect to what you want, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I will second it in that respect.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve the application?
Yes, approve the, subject to, subject to obtaining all of the permits and for road cuts, utilities, whatever is needed by the county or that has not been provided to us before.
All right, Chad, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Goldman Max?
No.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Allen.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Lomond?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
And Mr. Rosson?
No. Okay. So the application is denied? Okay, so, thank you. I'm sorry for the result. I appreciate the time and effort, but, but the decision has been made. Can I, can I, I think the agenda, please, seems to be missing at the moment. Michael, can you give me the agenda? Give me your agenda, please. Look to your left. Okay, next item on the agenda is case number 239, AHS Physicians' Practice, Block 1909, Lot 8, Seven Vos Avenue, Minor Site Plan. Applicant is seeking to change the use of parking from retail to medical. Do I have counsel for the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Nicholas G. Sekus.
I'm sorry, could you hold on for one moment, please?
How many do we need for requirement?
Five.
One, two, three, four, six. We're okay if you need to leave. Bye, thank you. I understand, thank you, Danny.
I'm sorry? There are, there are six people here, yes? Yes, so there's, there'll still be five. Nobody else leave, though. You're all stuck now.
Pass this down to Adam.
Okay. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
May please, may please, the Board. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nicholas G. Sekus of Sekus Law Group. On behalf of Atlantic Health Systems Physicians Group, I also represent the owner, Mr. Maluk Enterprises, Elias Maluk Realty Corp.
I'm sorry, there appears to be a problem. Can you bring the microphone a little closer up to you, sir?
Yes. The property is located at Seven Vos Avenue, Block 1909, Lot B. This is an application for minor site plan approval, and as requested, we have addressed and noticed the additional property owners of the lot that also had an easement, the adjacent property on South Orange Avenue, I'd like to present as a, as a housekeeping rule, the public noticed.
Secretary, not secretary?
So we have complied with the Board's last directive at the last meeting for completeness to notice some additional property owners on South Orange Avenue, which share the parking lot at issue. This property is located on Vos Avenue in the downtown business district of the village, just north of the intersection of South Orange Avenue. The property is currently developed, and we're not seeking to expand the current footprint or the property at all. We're, we are currently, it's a mixed-use property consisting of retail and residential units. It has onsite parking, which is one of the unusual characteristics, but it's a newly approved building that was developed that provides parking for the residential community that lives in the building predominantly. It also provides parking for approved retail use in a shared arrangement on South Orange Avenue, eliminating a parking burden on the borough. The applicant is proposing to use existing space for medical office space that does not require use variance, that is permitted use because of a redevelopment ordinance that this town passed prior to our application. This evening, I will have Mr. Robert Costa to address the memorandum that we received today and also provide testimony to the Board to consider for the site plan approval. Addressing the comments that were raised by your professional planner, I also have present, if the Board would entertain it and would require, the physician, who is going to be a part of the medical practice onsite, and also the business developer, the physician is Dr. Hugh Snyder, who is a resident of South Orange, has lived here for 10 years, knows the community, and wants to establish roots here, and respectfully believes that he's going to provide a benefit to the town, the community, by providing quality medical service with his group, who's associated in Summit, New Jersey, a few towns away, and also John Rosellini, the business developer, who can answer any questions or comments. I'll try to keep this brief, as I know there's another applicant, and the Board has been through an extensive application. If I may, with your permission, bring Mr. Robert Costa, the professional engineer first, to testify.
Please do.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Costa has two exhibits, which are part of your application, which will help him, aid him in providing testimony. We may use the easel that's currently?
You may.
Thank you. Where would the Board's pleasure, how would you like the? Where would the board's pleasure, how would you like the easel proposed?
That's fine, where it is.
Thank you, sir.
It's never an ideal setup.
No.
I also have representatives, the board should require the owner, but that's, I don't respectfully believe that's necessary.
Is that all right, or you want, members of the board want it placed elsewhere? I mean, I don't really.
Well, maybe for the public to see. Is there anyone for the public who's interested in this application?
I think it's also a camera issue.
Okay, let's, let's do it.
Is there a prob, I mean, well, wouldn't?
I think we keep right here.
Yeah.
It's fine where it is.
Yeah, it's good.
No, it's fine where it is.
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
Adam.
Mr. Costa, why don't you get sworn in and get qualified here.
Right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you will give to this board is the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Absolutely. For the record, my name is Robert Louis Costa, C-O-S-T-A, Licensed Professional Engineer in New Jersey, 34702, Professional Planner, 4639.
Mr. Costa, your educational background?
Bachelor of Engineering in Civil Engineering from Manhattan College in 1984, which means I'm getting old. Currently, the town engineer in the Borough River Edge for probably the past 15 or 17 years. I'm the planning board engineer in that community also, township engineer in Leonia, New Jersey, planning zoning board engineer in Leonia, New Jersey, Bogota, New Jersey. I'm the town engineer, formerly the town engineer in Saddle Brook up until January of this year, and I was also the planning and zoning board engineer in that community. I work on both sides, development sides, private, and obviously representing boards throughout, you know, throughout the Bergen County area.
Can you ask him to be qualified as an engineer or a planner, or both?
I think possibly a little bit of both, because there is, your planner has comments, and honestly, her, her critique and review of the application is probably what we're going to use or I'm going to use in order to present a lot of it tonight. I've done planning testimony, again, for both private applications and, and again, for public.
Have you appeared before this board before?
I have not. In West Orange, I was the engineer for the senior citizen, but not in, in South.
Okay, does this board accept, okay, will it accept as, as a expert, planner and engineer?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Costa, would you kindly briefly describe the application and the property at first?
Absolutely.
You can take the microphone with you.
Doesn't matter, you need to have one of them with you.
To be honest with you, now that I'm on a stage, some people will really comment about this this evening, the microphone being on the stage. Again, the, the property is very close to where we're-
Please bring the microphone closer, sir.
Where we're standing this evening. 7 Voze Avenue. It's currently developed as a residential building, a mixed-use building with two storefronts that are downstairs with the lobby area totaling roughly 4,184 square feet.
Combination.
That would be the combination of, of the two spaces. No problem, sorry. With those spaces, we're, again, we're proposing to put in medical offices. You heard Mr. Seekus earlier that members of the, the community, as far as the doctor is here this evening, also the representative from American Health is here this evening, and the ownership is here this evening. What we're proposing is, again, to put in the doctors' offices in a space that has been redeveloped in accordance with, obviously, your master plan and your central business district. We have a zoning record that, if the board doesn't have it, certainly I can give a copy, that the use itself is a permitted use. So what we're here for is strictly to go over the parking and what actually they're doing and whether there would be any detriment from that. So in that respect, under your ordinance, for this amount of square footage, you take the total square footage or the net square footage, 4,184 square feet, divide that number by 300 square feet per parking space, and you come up with a value of 14 spaces required. There's also a second part of the ordinance that says, how many doctors do you have? Take that number, times it by five, and you come up with the required parking spaces under that scenario. In this case, we're saying 14 parking spaces are required. You go into the building itself or into the underneath portion of the building, there's a, an enclosed parking garage. In that garage, there's 94 parking spaces. And again, that's shared with the market. If you go into the actual garage, you'll see signage in there. This parking is for the market. You have handicap parking spaces, ADA compliant spaces, and you also have shared parking. And then you'll have another sign in there that says, "For 7 and 11 Voze Avenue." Basically, that is the crux of the application, and that's why we're here tonight, to seek approval from this board. Your planner's report dated May 4th. Again, I apologize. Again, gives a, basically a brief history of, of the property itself. Again, there's 79, excuse me, there's 79 residential units. If you break that number down, how many one bedrooms? 27. Two bedrooms, 50. Three bedrooms, 2. For a total of 79 units currently at, at the property in question, required spaces under that scenario, we came up with 153 parking spaces, and there's 111 in the lower portion of the parking garage reserved strictly for their use.
Are you entertaining any application of parking?
You need, you need a microphone. You can't speak without one.
We're not utilizing or entertaining any application with respect to the residential.
Absolutely not.
We're just informing the board what currently exists.
Currently exists on the property. Again, we're not, we're not proposing any additional units. We're not proposing to increase the size of anything. Everything that you see today, if you walked outside, went into that building, is what we're, we're utilizing.
The spaces are currently vacant?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The actual- The actual spaces that we're talking about this evening, they're currently vacant, the proposed spaces on, on Voze Avenue, the retail spaces. They were initially prepared and approved by this board for retail use. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And under that scenario, how many parking space, how many parking spaces would be required? Would the count be the same, greater or less than the medical office?
That would, according to our calculations, it would be identical. 14 parking spaces would be required. And again, that's what was actually proposed when it was initially brought in, I guess, to the board and then ultimately approved by the board. If you go into your planner's report, actually, her second page gives the application history of this building, and it's, it's very concise. The original application was in 2003. It talked for 96 residential units and a 233 stall parking garage. It was amended in 2004. It was then further amended in 2006 to increase the number of residential units to 86. And again, the numbers that I was given by our client currently in the building is 79 units. So it's actually less than what was previously approved. With that, it has 111 parking spaces, which are actually there on the lower level that are strictly for the use of the residential. And then on the upper parking garage, there's 94 parking spaces. And again, they're shared between the market use, public parking, and obviously, I guess it was anticipated for ultimately when these, these two spaces would be rented. From my understanding, speaking to my client, these spaces have never been occupied.
The retail spaces, Nick? The, the two spaces that we're talking about?
Correct. The, the two retail, I call them retail or, or the ground floor spaces, have never been occupied by any tenancies. This is the first tenant that's actually come to the plate, has executed a lease, and again, obviously, it's contingent upon this board approving it. So that's, that's really the crux of the application. That's why we're here this evening.
Any questions?
I'd like to start with, my guess, by the way, is that our planner is going to direct you to her comments on the last page, but, but having said that out, we'll ask the planner or Sal, our engineer, if he has any comments or questions.
So can you clarify some of the questions that we have under your, under our comments? And I'm sure Mr. Renda has other questions.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
The, let's see, by ordinance, 14 parking spaces, and again, that's what I've testified to. The current parking structure is, again, shared by the ground level, retail, the market. And again, if you walk into that area, you'll see that it's actually signed accordingly. There was a resolution in 2006 stating that there were 12 spaces that would be shared for retail and residential, 18 spaces would be open, and generic, I guess, for public parking. I'm not sure exactly what that means, so I'm, I would have a little difficulty going into the thought process. What, I'm not sure if it meant anybody in the public could use that or people-
I think it was really focused on-
Focused on the building.
-the businesses that were along.
Okay. In, in this, in the building or?
Next door.
Okay.
The intent was to have public parking in that location because the prior site had public parking spaces. In order to develop the site, they wanted to maintain some parking for the general public, for the businesses in that area. So that's why those 18 spaces were created.
Understood.
And those spaces currently exist. We, did you, did you go to, did you go to the site before and today?
Yes.
Did you confirm, Mr. Costa, that the 18 spaces are currently available?
There are 94. We counted, and again, the, the mapping that the, that the board has in front of them this evening is what is out there today. Those 94 spaces absolutely exist.
And the 18 still exist, and there are 14 spaces dedicated to this or earmarked for this particular use? Is that correct?
Okay.
Or shared?
Shared. It would be-
Mr. Costa, if I'm going to just turn your attention to the 2006 resolution, which I think was the one that designated the parking for this building. It says, "The allocation of spaces at the grade level," which is the level we're talking about-
Correct.
"-where there are 94 spaces would be 64 for the supermarket, 12 which are shared for residential and retail, and 18 spaces which are open for use by both the project and the general public with a two-hour limit."
Correct.
Okay, so that's 64 of the 94 on the first floor are for the supermarket. That's 12 that are shared residential and retail, and 18 which are open to the project and the public.
Correct.
The spaces that are intended to be used by this tenant will come from which of those?
Well, it's, it could only come from the 18 and the, and the 12. We are not dedicating 14 for this tenancy. There, there is no, in the lease, from my understanding, there is no dedicated spaces for him. So you're not going to see a sign saying, "For this use, park here." So I would imagine if you're going to go to that use, you could use any of the 18 parking spaces as long as you don't stay there for more than two hours, or you would use the other parking spaces that are-
So you're saying that the 12 that are supposed to be shared for residential and retail, and the 18 spaces which are open for the project and the public, those 30 spaces are some of the, are the spaces which you believe that these tenants will use?
Could, could, could use. Again, there's on-street parking, there's also a municipal lot if they would desire to use that. But yes, they could use, based on what I've been given, what I've read, I believe they're allowed to use those spaces.
On the map that you provided, can you point out which spaces you're specifically talking about?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. And also these, one, one through seven?
One through seven, and with the, again, there's, there's handicap parking spaces, ADA compliant spaces that I would imagine they're not signed. I would, I would think anybody could use those spaces as long as they had a license.
Having some medical office.
Reserved for the doctor's office.
Any kind of spaces for the medical area?
Based on your ordinance, it's, no, it's, it's basically, you look at it both directions. The total square footage, any amount of professionals, doctors that are going to utilize in the space.
On, on the plan that you've, you've provided, though, it shows the, these spaces are reserved for the doctor's office, the shaded spaces.
Actually, the signage that's in the building right now, that's what it says on the sign, and that's what we put on our plan. I'm not sure that's correct, what's signed out in the building, but that's-
So the signs now, they say reserved for the avenue or something?
It says seven, I believe it says 7 and 11.
Seven and nine, yeah, the signs. And the last page, is it, is it the last page of the planner's report?
I'm not sure that's-
So those, those are the spaces that are reserved for what was the retail space?
Yeah.
So your intent is to reserve those spaces for the doctors?
Yeah.
Spaces. Okay, so they won't be the shared spaces and the public spaces?
Again, I think if someone came to that establishment, I believe they could use either space if they wanted to, as long as you didn't stay more than two hours.
All right. The, the other question I have is, you indicate that two doctors, two professionals, but it's also indicating the application that there's eight employees.
And that's on number four.
That's a typographical error. We, we did not, we've copied the last application that was submitted by the prior businessperson. We've clarified that it could provide testimony tonight. That's why we brought Dr. Snyder and Mr. Rosellini, who could embellish on that and provide information to the board on that. There would be no more than, Mr. Costa, have you had discussions with Dr. Rosellini, I mean, Dr. Snyder?
Yes.
About that? How, what is the type of business arrangement, and based upon the space that is currently built out but not occupied, what is the current maximum amount of physicians and/or paraprofessionals that will be onsite at this location?
No, from what I was told this evening, no more than two, two professionals at any one time.
Two professionals and one other employee, you said?
No, there, there could be more employees, but the way the ordinance, your ordinance is drafted, it's-
How many, okay, I guess we asked a question to someone else.
I'm not sure who, you know, how much-
Yeah, we can ask the proper question.
Hold the questions off for now.
I think we should hold off and ask the physician.
Okay.
Did, were all of the questions, your comments addressed, Susan?
So, so I guess picking up on Mr. Renda's comment, bless you, picking up on Mr. Renda's comment, that's, that's our number four in terms of question. So what you're saying is that the eight employees, that's, that's a typographical error that-
Yes. Let, let the, let the owner, let one of the other applicants-
No, no, I know. I just wanted to clarify what this testimony, his testimony was, and you'll clarify with the owner-
Yes.
-as to what that breakdown is.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. But just to follow up, so the, the spaces that are shown on the plan will be reserved for the doctor's office. Is that correct? What's, what's shown on here now?
If, if those spaces can be dedicated for that use, then certainly, if this board wants us to do that, we'll do that. Again, I'm, if, if the intent of that approval-
I think, I think, I think the, what you're getting here is that it's your application. You put, I mean, whoever put this forward said those were the spaces. So at this point, we're just asking you to say yes or no.
Say yes.
Not, not whatever we want, yes or no. Are these the spaces?
These are the spaces. They are.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the only issue is this. You have an, an ordinance in place for this particular site under a redevelopment. I do not want to make this board change what is drafted under that. So if, if these can be dedicated for that use, we will do so. If we can't because of that, we will not do so.
Okay. So let me see, there are 30, there are 30 spaces-
Correct.
-there. Certain number, and 14, before there were 12 for the retail, you need 14 for the doctors. Question is whether you're going to reserve those spaces specifically. You say you're going to leave them open for anybody to use because different times, different days, you're going to call for different things. So on weekends, when the doctors or maybe anyone but Dr. Snyder, you might only have one doctor on a Saturday, so some of those spaces could be used-
For some other purpose.
-by the other thing. I mean, I, I prefer the flexible parking personally. I think the concern is that, that, that maybe some of the spaces, and if it wasn't all 14, were just specifically reserved for the doctor. Is that the concern, Sal, or not?
Yeah.
Okay, so you may want to say that, that we want to take, even though we know we need 14 spaces, we don't think everywhere you're going to need all 14, and we're going to take eight of those spaces and reserve those for the doctor and leave the other six flexible. I think that's the direction you're going, right?
I don't think so. I don't get that impression.
Right?
I'm looking at the plan that was submitted, and it clearly shows reserved for doctors. I've heard what you said. I have been to this garage many times, and on days, all of these spaces are filled, other than the two leasing spaces that are marked for their leasing personnel.
I think you said that by tenants, they're not taken.
What?
I think he meant they're not taken by tenants. For some of those spaces-
I, I don't know who they're taken by, but they're taken. The leasing spaces, I don't care. They want to earmark those for MDs.
But that's why, that's why I would-
Also, the, also the prior approval for the retail space was, was to set aside the 12 spaces. So they're taking two spaces to create the 14 spaces.
Right.
They're taking those two spaces, they're taking them from the shared spaces or from the residential space, you know, it- the residential space, you know, it's shifting the variances that were granted before, and that's where the clarifications have to come in. The grant, the variances that were granted in the past, parking variances for the re, you know, you know, for the retail, for the, um, residence, and, and the shared parking, you know, the, shared parking, you know, for the public wasn't a variance, but that was a requirement, because as part of the development, they were, this was a parking lot.
There was six spaces, right?
Uh, the original.
Shared parking.
Sir, I'm only reacting to the plan which shows.
Shared, yeah.
The spaces carved out and marked reserved.
And, and again, I don't, the only reason we show that is because if you go there right now, there is signage on those parking spaces that say that. That's why we, that's why.
Same reserved for medical office?
No, for, for seven and eleven.
Yeah.
That's the address of.
Seven and nine.
That's the address for those sites. That's what the signage actually says if you go there this evening, and that's why we're depicting in front of this board that. But again, it's shared parking, we're not increasing the size of the parking spaces, and we're not requesting a variance.
I don't know why those signs are there.
And I think respectfully, why, why the spaces are utilized?
Part of the confusion is those signs don't reflect what was granted by this board.
Yeah.
Well, they were, because the space has been vacant ever since, and I think people have been pushing in, and it, your observation is quite correct, sir, that when the spaces are left empty, what, what is the natural flow of people to do? To occupy vacant space, and there is no tenants there. So that's just the natural consequence. When this tenant comes into account, we will demarcate those, those spaces, and also show reserved spaces as needed to comply with whatever the board should so require.
Okay.
So the application is correct. So what you, but, well, what you're telling me is that on the plans, when it shows that they will be dedicated, that's your intent, to dedicate?
Yes, of course, 'cause otherwise, how, the, the physicians, where they're, where they're gonna park, where's the doctors gonna park?
And that's the primary concern.
That's not what your planner just said.
Okay.
And also, the, the original approval was those twelve spaces were to be shared by the retail and the residential.
But there is no retail.
There is no retail?
No, the prior approval.
That's correct.
The space, the space on Vos Avenue, those retail units, when they were approved, they needed the twelve spaces for those retail units, and those spaces were to be shared. And the, and the intent at that time was.
Shared with who?
With residents. The intent at that time was that, you know, residents during the day, you know, they're not there, or whatever, they're not parking there, but there are spaces available.
So now they're saying that they don't want the residents to park there.
Well, now, what, what we're, what we're seeing here on the plan is that those spaces, now fourteen spaces, are going to be reserved. And that's, you know, again, they get, it, it rolls back to the original variances that were granted for the parking, and how, how this particular use has changed. And then there's, you know, there is also the question of, of the employees, employee parking, things like that, a re, you know, which, you know, we'll, we'll talk to the, you know, to the doctors, you know, about it, and, and see that, because I believe that the, you know, the fourteen spaces may be not sufficient as it is right now, based on the way the ordinance is written. So we need to get into that too as well. But the concern I have is that those spaces were shared, now they're dedicated, and there's actually two more than what was originally, originally, uh, set aside for the retail. And that's why, you know, the board has to weigh those options, and how this parking is gonna be laid out.
So you're saying we could go to twelve dedicated spaces for the, for the doctors and be okay?
No.
I, no, I'm not saying that.
I don't know that.
I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that at all. The question, the question becomes, 'cause it's not just doctors, it's doctors, technicians, paraprofessionals, any, you know, the, the other people that are working there.
That's not right.
You know, and the ordinance is specifically written that you need five spaces for each of them.
Okay. So we gotta find out how many employees.
We need to find out, you know.
Okay.
But this, where, I'm sorry, where would the additional two come from? It says twelve now for the spaces.
Well, that's the question.
Where is the two from the?
They're pulling it from the public.
They're coming from, I, I would assume from the public spaces, though, you know, they already have a, they already have.
They have sixteen other spaces they can pull it from.
Right. The, the, the lot has flexibility, but there's also other, other parking available. I think that's what Mr. Costa, Mr. Costa, could you please talk about where are the employees of other businesses and other, what is the purpose of the municipal lots, and the number of lots and on-street parking? Would you kindly embellish to the board that consideration? The board can take into consideration, we don't have to take into account, there's no variance here, but should the board, why don't you describe the area?
I think, you know, I just think the bigger issue is the enforcement, because as, as, as Mr. Miller said, and I've, and I've never been, I've never had any trouble finding a parking space there personally, but I guess I go at different times than he does. But the real question is, how do you enforce who's parking and how? So you dedicate X number of parking spaces for the supermarket, X number for the doctors, and X, who's enforcing those spaces for the doctors? There used to be someone for the market, but I haven't seen anybody there in, in a long time. So how are you enforcing that? And that's the question, and I don't know if you wanna enforce it, or you're just gonna go by potluck, but.
Again, I think that goes back to management.
Okay, that's fine.
Obviously, but just to clarify the record, there's ninety-four parking spaces in that garage.
But we're only dealing with thirty of them, though.
I understand that. Sixty-four are dedicated to the market. The remaining are shared parking, and for these two, we call them retail spaces, because that's how they were created when this was, was developed. That's what exists. There's thirty parking spaces for these two properties to use, these two addresses to use, and the remainder is a shared parking that says, "Public parking, limited for two hours." That's what currently exists at that site.
What I'm, I'm just, Sal, I need a little bit of clarification on something. So, the, previously, before we had this application before us, the idea was that eventually this planning board would receive potentially an application for retail uses, and we might have to consider.
No.
The parking at that point. No?
No, it was approved for retail, it wouldn't have come back to the board if they.
Okay, so, so then let's do it, let's do it differently. Let's, uh, what was the concept for, you know, i- if the retail require, does the retail require a certain number of spaces?
Yes.
Okay. How many spaces retail require?
One for every three hundred square feet, fourteen spaces.
Okay. So they required fourteen spaces, right?
Yes.
So what's the difference if retail was already approved, and now medical is approved?
Because you need one.
What's the difference?
Because you need one space, you need five spaces for every doctor, paratechnician.
So, but if they testified.
But let me just, hold on a second, let me finish, okay? When the application came before my desk, as a zoning officer, for them to do this, they, they, the floor plan, which wasn't included in here, showed several examination rooms with, throughout this building, all right? When you take a look at all those rooms and a number of spaces, it doesn't appear that there's only going to be just two doctor, paratechnicians, you know, paraprofessionals, technicians in there. Most likely, there's going to be more than two. And the question becomes, how is the parking going to be addressed? It's a different type of parking than the retail. And that's why, they, because it's a different type of use, there are different parking requirements, and that's why they have to come to the board to clarify exactly how that's gonna be done. If they need to take parking from some of the shared spaces, or some of the public spaces in order to meet their requirement, that's something that this board has to agree to.
But the fourteen spaces, let's assume for a moment.
Twelve spaces.
Let's, let's, no, you just said a moment ago, it was fourteen, based on, well, based on three hundred, one space for three hundred square feet, four thousand one hundred eighty-four, so that's fourteen, right?
Right.
Okay, so let's assume for a moment that it's fourteen that the retail would get to use.
No.
This board, this board agreed that the medical use would also be considered an acceptable use. It's going to be under, considered under the same standard. Forget the employees for a second, okay? Let's for a moment, assume, take it face value, just for a moment, that there are only gonna be two professionals. Why would we treat their application any differently? Forget the employees, just look at the calculation. Why would we treat the application any differently? Why would any of these questions come up? Would you raise these questions if it was a retail use?
No.
So therefore, the only question that's relevant at this point is whether or not they're going to have two professionals, three professionals, or ten professionals.
Right.
Just to clarify, the original site plan was approved for retail use.
Yes.
And it was granted a variance, a parking variance, because it didn't supply the required number of parking spaces.
Correct.
Okay? This is a different type of use. There are different parking requirements for this use, all right? It, the, what, what needs to be clarified is, how many parking spaces do they actually need? They claim there's gonna be two doctors, if that's gonna be the case, then the board, you're okay. But they're also, but they are also taking spaces away from what were set aside for the other uses in the variance, because there was only twelve spaces.
So with the retail.
Hmm?
But so with the retail?
No.
In the same way?
The retail, we had twelve.
No, the retail was twelve spaces.
They gave a variance for two.
It's fourteen or four, I, okay.
But there was also redevelopment.
I don't, I don't. It's, it's okay, we can just move on.
Thanks, Chairman.
I don't, please don't.
Okay, I will say another word.
I don't need to.
Please don't. Okay. Do you believe that this approval for medical use can be granted without substantial detriment to the public?
Yes.
And why is that?
Again, it's a permitted use. It's not a question that you have to jump over the bar as far as getting a use variance, that's not why we're here tonight. It's permitted, and again, it goes back to strictly the parking. Mr. Chairman, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Thank you. Look, can we speak to the doctor now? I can move things along.
I'm sorry, are there any?
Any other questions?
You can't, you can't just jump that quickly.
I apologize.
Are there any other questions from the professionals or members of this board?
I have a question of our planner. Uh, Ms. Grill, is a doctor's office or medical profession considered an inherently beneficial use?
No, not on, no, not on its own, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from our professionals or members of this board? Are there any questions from members of the public for this witness?
Yes.
Okay, please come up, identify yourself by name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Alyssa Anderson, from South Orange.
Alyssa, your street address, please.
Oh, on South Orange, um, on South Orange Avenue. My question is, will you be using this South Orange library lot?
Not to my, no, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the public?
Slide it in, Alyssa.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay, hearing non-counsel, you.
If I may, call.
Yes.
Hugh Snyder. Dr. Hugh Snyder. Thank you.
My name's Hugh Snyder, I'm the physician.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give to this board is the whole truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Hugh Snyder, H-U-G-H-S-N-Y-D-E-R. I'm a ten-year resident of South Orange, I live on Irving Avenue, and it's my hope to have a doctor's office here in town.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Snyder, if you would, just, you're a medical doctor?
Yes.
Your qualifications are not an issue, but what type of medicine do you practice, sir?
Family medicine.
Are you currently associated with another medical group?
The Springfield and Summit Springfield Family Practice and Pediatrics Practice, uh, we have an office in Summit, New Jersey, adjacent to Overlook Hospital.
Now, uh, would you kindly describe, you're familiar with this use? You've been involved?
Yes.
Mr. Ros, John Rosellini, the business development advisor?
Yes, I have.
Could you, would you please tell the board what portion of this space would be utilized for your internal medicine practice?
Uh, when you're facing the building, there is a door in the middle which leads to the residential area. Uh, to the left is a ground-level storefront, which also has a second door, and that is the space that we intend to occupy.
That's number seven?
Yes.
That's not number space eleven, is that correct?
Correct.
Eleven's gonna be utilized for retail space, is that correct?
Yeah, that's it, that's not me.
Okay, that's, uh, Dr. Snyder, if you would, uh, can you please tell the board how many physicians or paraprofessionals will be at the site at any given one time?
Um, in the beginning, it's probably gonna be one physician, then a physician, maybe with a nurse practitioner, at most, two physicians. I mean, we currently are opening it as a satellite office, and, you know, we're fully staffed at our current office, so we're gonna be loaning out doctors to get the place.
And will they be on rotation?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be working out who's at the new office. It'll probably be myself and, uh, Dr. Barney Dobek.
Do you have the capacity to put more than two physicians at this location to service patients' needs?
I don't believe so, because we're rotating providers. Uh, the office area has enough so that each provider can have a desk that's got their stuff when they're there, uh, but it's not the intent for someone to be sitting at each of those desks all the time.
Okay. Uh, and you believe, uh, are you willing to accept the limitation of two medical providers on the site currently?
Yeah, I mean, the way that we see patients, I don't believe we could fit more than two. I think that's assessment is correct.
Okay. I have no further questions, if anyone has any questions.
Our professionals have any questions for this? Yes.
Go ahead, Sal.
Sal, you can go ahead if you like.
He's calculating.
Yes, I guess I was a little confused. I thought that the, uh, proposal was to use the entire first floor.
No.
So you're only using number seven?
Correct.
Okay, so then the remaining number, unit B or number 11, will also require parking?
That's retail, though. That's not medical.
I understand that, but I'm just, I mean, from the board's.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's only used in half, so it's half the amount of retail space, so it changes the parking requirement or it doesn't change?
It reduces, it does reduce the parking requirement.
But you still have to allow for six spaces for number 11 or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they split in half, the size of the spaces?
No, number 11 is smaller than the, than number seven.
So number 11 would need five or six spaces?
Yeah.
And numbers, and how many, I didn't catch the whole thing, but how many employees are going to be there at any one time?
Minimum, there'll be someone at the front desk and someone putting patients in rooms, you know. Our, our hope is growth, but we're not going to grow bigger than we can park in, so, you know, we have one provider and the staff to support that one provider, and then if we grow to two, a doctor with a nurse practitioner. I mean, currently, we, we can have one person putting in patients for two providers at our current office, so, I mean, I'm not going to be answering phones, so there's going to be a person at the front desk and a person in the back.
You're not going to have a PA or a tech taking blood?
The medical assistants are trained to draw blood, and so.
So you will have medical assistants there?
That's who puts the patients in the rooms, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Yeah, the person at the, a medical assistant can sit at the front desk, and they can also put patients in rooms, and they can also draw blood, so they're, they're sort of what I refer to as, you know, the person who's there.
They would be considered technicians then, because they would have to have.
Yeah, I guess they, they have a technical training.
Okay, so at most, you're looking at two doctors and one technician?
The minimum function would be one in the front and one in the back with one, with, if I, if I was there by myself.
Just give a number.
Yeah, two, three, let's say three to max out the potential parking question.
Okay, so three would require 15 parking spaces.
No, two of the physicians is 10, and then the regular employees is?
No, if you read the ordinance, it includes technicians, paraprofessionals, doctors, so, so it would be one, it would be five for each, so that would be 15 parking spaces for that, just for that use, and then you would need another at least five or six, I gotta do the calculation for there, for the retail.
But if the front desk person and the technician and the provider are all serving a single patient, I'm not sure that that multiplying on number of providers is really the intent of that language.
Sal, I'm sorry, could you just clarify for me, with the definition of professional, are you, are you taking that from the, from the zoning ordinance? I'm just trying to figure out, I want to read the same language you're reading.
Is it five per doctor or five per employee, Sal?
One for every 300 square foot of net floor area examination or treatment room, office and waiting room, or five for each doctor, dentist, paraprofessional or technician, whichever.
So in this case, there's only two professionals?
Two professionals, that's what, that's what we were trying to say, we would not exceed more than two professionals for doctors, is that true?
So it'll be one doctor, one technician, and then perhaps just a receptionist or?
Correct.
We may be reading the word paraprofessional differently. I, I was thinking a physician with a, a nurse practitioner who would each generate a patient flow, but like someone who takes the patient's insurance information, and then someone who takes the patient's blood pressure, and then sees the doctor, that's one patient, one parking space for those three acts. They're not each going to be a paraprofessional who requires additional parking spaces. So I'm, I'm just thinking the providers that are patients making an appointment with, that's the number that you're going to want to have your parking related to, correct? Is that not?
I'm, I'm just going by the ordinance.
Right, but like a paraprofessional in that language, my reading of it was a person who a patient would come to see, not each individual they'd meet throughout their travels to the provider.
But if you have a pa, you have a patient that comes in to, you know, they, you just need them to, you need to just draw blood to do a test. They come in, they see that, you know, they may not see the doctor every time. They may see a technician, or they may see, you know, that's the intent. There is the possibility that, you know, patients come in and see technicians or paraprofessionals or doctors, you know, or all three, you know, however it's, you know, however it's laid out. I understand what you're saying, so if you're, you're saying there's going to be one doctor, one technician, you need 10 parking spaces. If there's going to be two doctors and one technician, you need 15. That's where the clarification needs to, needs to be put before this board, and then, you know, and then we'll also have to have the discussion about the remaining space and the required parking for the additional space.
So, I mean, I guess if, if, you know, if I run a family practice, which is what I got, you know, we can have a, you know, technician putting patients in for two providers. They're not adding any additional patients. If I was a specialist and I required two or three assistance for procedures I was doing in the office, we'd all be working on one patient. I don't think that's a reasonable way to do your parking math.
Can I? I just want to jump in real quick, because I've done medical design for, I've done medical design for hospitals.
Yes.
And MOBs and emergency rooms and all kinds of stuff, and that five number is pretty tight. I gotta say, like, if we're in other states, you'd be, you'd have a bigger number, and, and it, you know, I, I gotta say, like, if, I agree with what Sal's saying, it's like, if you, and I, and I'm not getting, and I'm, I gotta say, like, I'm not getting any clarity from you guys, like, is it two or three? If it's three, it's just, it's three. If you have a technician, you, and you have two doctors, you need to follow the requirements, because it's going to be 15, and I know from my, from my experience that all those spaces will get filled every single day. And we've had to build, we've had to build, you know, parking, parking towers to be able to build a hospital in the past, so that's what I'm saying, like, that's a pretty standard number.
I guess from just my clarification, then, if I go to a doctor, I'm going to go see the doctor, I meet the receptionist, the person who then takes me to the room, I'm not going for either of those two, I'm just going for the doctor, are we?
But that's not, that's not always the case, because sometimes you can, there's things for like a touchdown, where you can go and get a prescription, or you can get something simple done from a technician, that you don't need to see the, the, the actual physician to have something taken care of. They can actually deal with patient flow, and I'm not saying that's how you guys are set up.
Is that what your intent is?
But the zoning is, is trying to take that into consideration.
I, I guess I'm not clear on what the intent of that parking to provider number is, and, you know, my opinion is it's, it seems like it's the, the primary person you make the appointment with, which is the doctor or a nurse practitioner, which is where the word paraprofessional gets added to that, the way I read it. To take every employee and require five spots for them, it's just, I didn't read it that way. I, I'm surprised that, you know, the person at the front desk is expected to have five parking spaces when they're collecting insurance for.
He's not saying that, that's what he's saying.
I guess I'm misunderstanding the paraprofessional.
No, I mean, no, it's, it's, if you have somebody at the front desk who's, you know, a receptionist, a secretary, you know, or, that's, they are not considered the technician or the paraprofessional. It's just, it's, it's your.
And that's, that's why we said two. I wanted to make that clear to the board. The person at the front desk will not be a paraprofessional, she will be a receptionist, and that person will take the forms and greet the customers, they typically do, get the insurance information, give out the boards, ad fill-out, you know, make copies of the licenses and all the administrative things that take place in the practice. This is not going to be a specialist practice, it'll be an internal medicine practice, from my understanding, and we're only limiting it to 21, 22 square feet. That's why we're not taking into account that other square foot. I think it was important for the board to know that we're not asking for a medical office for the retail space of 2062. Mr. Rosellini can discuss that, if you want some clarification.
So, I have two questions.
Right.
Would you ever have someone come into an office and just see the physician assistant to take blood to do a quick check, or would every person come in and see a doctor?
In your practice?
Yeah, I mean, with, with what your intent is, because I think that's where.
With this satellite office, we would, we would try to minimize that because our staffing is going to be limited. We have, at our larger office, adjacent to Overlook Hospital, we have hospital phlebotomists who do blood draws. If someone just needed blood draws, I'd probably direct them to that office, which can handle it better. You know, the, the staff here is going to be to try to have us have patient visits, not additional things. I, I guess I didn't really attach, you know, parking spaces to like the people who do blood pressure for me, and so that, these exceptional questions about will ever a person come and pick up a prescription, yeah, that's possible. You know, I don't consider that paraprofessional. I, I guess I misunderstood the wording, that if someone, I mean, the other issue is, you know, in the, in the presentations I've made to, to this board about the, the office being there, you know, one of the discussions was that, you know, a doctor's office is, is not adding to foot traffic downtown, and, and I thought, you know, patients might come and, you know, have a multiple spending experience in our downtown, in which case the sort of original parking space question, you know, gets hard to answer. You know, if someone decides to go to lunch and then also shops at Kitchen A la Mode, who were, whose parking space were they using? What, you know, they, they, the idea is that, you know, the town provides parking for people who are using the various things available in the town, and, I mean, I understand at this phase, this is like, you know, counting the beans of the parking spaces, but in reality, you know, more people downtown is, was one of our goals.
And then, real quick, one other last question, just for clarification. Are we talking about 4184, or are we talking about 2122?
2122. 2122.
So what are the requirements for 21?
What he's saying, it depends on the number of professionals, but you still have to.
And that's all, okay.
But you still have to allow for that five or six spaces for the other one, because the other space could be rented out. We still need to allow five or six spaces.
Which currently it's.
For retail there, unless it's being used for something internally, I just don't know, but.
We will stipulate that that will not be used medically.
But, Doctor, previously, at some of your present, at your presentation, I remember when we were asked to rezone, so to speak, to permit this use, and there was a lot of negative comments from the public. It was proposed that it was going to be a walk-in clinic, which means people, to me, didn't have to have an appointment, they could just come in, and I believe you made that presentation also, when you said people would be able to park and then come in. Now I'm hearing this is going to be by appointment, and it's just a basic, regular office, and it's not walk-in traffic?
I never made a presentation that it would be walk-in traffic. We have same-day appointments. I think that may have been what I said, and the, the meaning was, was misinterpreted, or maybe someone else made that comment, it wasn't me, but, you know, the intention is that we'll be available. I mean, one of the other things about this location is that the expectation is that people in town will be able to walk to it, and parking will be a non-issue for them, and the commuter population that's occupying these residential buildings are, are sort of our target audience, it's not a parking-based model.
Doctor, I'd also like to clarify, you're not going to have any lab facilities on, on this location?
No.
Can I ask us a question? In your, what is your anticipation of number of patients an hour, in your experience for this size, for the, what you say, one doctor, one practitioner, one assistant? What do you think, what's your anticipation, George?
On a busy day, I can see 30 patients a day.
So how many is that an hour, you think?
In the first three hours, it's about 15 patients per three-hour period, so five in an hour.
Five in an hour?
I mean, that's an average. There's some visits that are longer and some that are shorter, and they're scheduled unintentionally to make that possible.
Pardon me? And that would, that would go along with the requirement of the five spaces, because the patients are coming in, they're not coming in all at once, but they're coming in while one is being prepped, or, you know, getting ready to go, or filling out paperwork, and the next one's coming in for the meeting, you know, for the appointment, that's maybe, you know, 15 minutes later, 20 minutes later, so that, and that's, I believe, the intent of the five spaces, you know, for, you know, each doctor, technician, paraprofessional. One of the things that, and, you know, which I don't think was clear in the beginning about the use of the spaces, you know, having them split, I think originally, I think it was, because they indicate on here the net floor area of the 4184 square feet, and that's the 14 spaces. That's for both of these spaces. If you cut it, if you cut it out now, then the unit number seven is 2122 square feet. The other, the other side is about 1300 square feet, so there's now two parking calculations that need to be looked at, and tied into the existing 12 spaces that were set aside for the entire retail space, and what additional parking is required, and how that's going to work out, which, which is probably something that they should, you know, take a look at. I think what the doctor's saying, you know, basically you're looking at one doctor, one technician, is, or a paraprofessional, or perhaps three at some point, if, you know, depending on how, you know, how things work. Is, is, is that basically how you're looking at your operation to be? One, one or two doctors and one technician, or one doctor and perhaps two technicians at any given time? That's, at max?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we've resolved our vocabulary for these other people who aren't the front desk that we're calling receptionists, but I mean, I see two people who are the people who appointments are made with.
Okay.
And there are other people, other, you know, functionalities in terms of taking vital signs, but I, I just don't think they're going to drive, that's not the person who drives office visits, so like if I, if there's two doctors and, and then two facilitators of the doctors, that's not for professionals or paraprofessionals, in my, in terms of the business model and the way that our office functions, so I guess, you know, I'm thinking like a, you know, a nurse practitioner, someone who's, people are making appointments with, we're going to probably keep it to two. Will there be other people there, helping? There will, you know, as, one or, ideally one for the two people, but if we get busy and it's quicker to have two people helping the two people who are making the appointments, you know, it's, I don't feel like we're adding visits, we're just making the visits more efficient, and so to add parking spaces every time I bring someone in to like, help me, I, I just, I don't think that's a paraprofessional.
Will this be viewed more as an intake office? The medical practices have changed, hasn't it changed? Was this the way that changing practices, has this office been established or wanted to be established as an independent-running office, or is it part of the larger group?
It's really going to be a satellite of the larger group.
I think that's the way the medical practice intake offices have now popped up. I think we all see them, and I think the board should understand that this is a changing, one of the things to try to increase activity to the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You can't just run off. Any other questions from professionals? Any other, yes, no, don't know?
I'm, I'm still trying to factor in this change in the numbers.
Any other questions from members of the board?
I, go ahead.
So, if, just for calculations sake, if we're saying unit A, and we're saying it's three professionals, which is at 15, and that's the 2122 square foot, correct, if we're then looking at potentially unit B, which is 2,062, and if you divide that by 300, you're looking at 6.8, are we then potentially saying that there needs to be almost 22 spaces available in this lot?
That's what he's saying, 22 spaces, out of that 30 spaces, we have 30 spaces you're talking about, and that, because we have to, they have to decide they're going to divide them up differently, but six have to be for the public, so that leaves you, so that leaves you 24 spaces, and 22 to 24 would then be dedicated to this, and are we okay with that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion. I'm, I am thinking that there is a certain lack of clarity. We're going back and forth in trying to figure out hypothetically what may or may not be the case. You know, we thought it was going to be the entire first, you know, first floor, now it's only part of the first floor. It's certain spaces, they're reserved spaces, they're not reserved spaces. My strong suggestion to the applicant at this point, and I'm speaking just for myself, so fellow members of the board have a different feeling, they're certainly welcome to tell me that I'm, that I'm out of, that I'm wrong, or that they feel differently. My suggestion would be that the applicant go back and really come for, read through the ordinance very carefully, figure out what it is that you're presenting exactly as it relates to the issues that we as a planning board have to consider. That includes definitions of professionals and paraprofessionals and, and so forth. Figure out what you're going to do in terms of the parking spaces, how you're going to meet that, think about that relative to the use of the retail space, and then come back with a, a proposal, or an, you know, and, and clarify for us what it is you're looking for exactly.
Am I, am I?
I think, I think you're on the right track, and I think it has to clarify, those 30 spaces, you have to be very specific, which spaces are for the doctor's office, which space for the retail, which space for the public, and the other, I think there may be one or two spaces left over, and say the variance is to change this that was written here to, to that what it is, and, and I don't really know that we, and I think, I think that's really all you have to do. I don't think we need to hear from Dr. Snyder again either, but I think we need to know that those spaces, how they're being dedicated, and how you're combining the retail and the doctor's office.
If I may, may I speak to my client, get that permission, because I understand what the board requests. We did receive the, and I apologize, we did receive the clarifying points today, so we did not have probably the adequate time to prepare.
Do you want to take a minute to talk to your?
Sal, I have another question for you. There were some open ends with the, with the building, in terms of planters and light poles and so forth. Has that ever been cleared up? If you remember, there was a question, it wasn't supposed to be concrete planters, it was supposed to be something else, and I think Doug Newman raised a question, it was a light pole on one spot that was supposed to be relocated to another spot. Have those issues been cleared up?
I'm not sure what, what issues you're talking about, but.
We'll, we'll clear up those issues too, sir. We'll clear them up. We'll speak to the, to the building, the engineer, and clear it up, whatever issues you're concerned with.
So you had an opportunity to confer with your.
Yes, we'd like to carry the application, if it's possible, with the board's permission.
And I think you can get it done in 15 minutes.
Yeah, I, I don't suspect that it will take very long once everybody's on the same page.
We thank you very much for your comments and appreciate your courtesy as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, will you waive the requirement of renoticing for the next public? Can we carry the current approval?
So this will be carried to the next planning board meeting, currently scheduled for Thursday, June 4th. Further notice is not required.
We thank you, sir.
Five minutes, as long as everybody agrees to come back, I'm willing to take a five-minute break.
Where we go.
All right, we're going to take recess for five minutes.
Got five?
One, two, three, four, five.
Case number 240, South Mountain Benebrith Jewish Community Senior Housing Corporation, block 1007, please.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Jay Rice from Nagel Rice, the attorney who represents South Mountain Benebrith Jewish Community Senior Housing Corp. With permission at this late, I'm going to dispense with any opening statement and go right to our first witness.
That's fine.
Harold Colton Max.
Mr. Colton Max, are you going to testify on behalf of the applicant?
I am. I serve as the CEO of the aforementioned organization, the South Mountain Benebrith Jewish Community Senior Citizen Housing Corporation.
Is there anyone else who could testify on behalf of the applicant?
There is no one else here from that organization, and I have testified on my own personal behalf for my own residence.
For your own residence, but on behalf of a entity, it would be an issue if there's someone else could testify?
Well, no one informed me that there might be such an issue, or I might have asked one of my other staff members to be here. At this late hour, I suspect I won't be able to roust anybody to come. I could have done that earlier, but nobody indicated that was an issue. I'm not, what's the difference between my testifying as a member of the, as a staff person of an organization, and, I mean, yes, I'm obviously a member of this planning board, but I'm accusing myself from any involvement in the voting on this case. I mean, our deliberation.
Are there? The attorney could, if he's familiar with the facts, testify. As a fact witness, we need a fact witness.
I'll testify.
Other than Mr. Colton Max.
Right. I'm going to testify not just as an attorney, I'm also the past president of the Jewish Community Housing Corporation. I still serve on, on the Board of Trustees, so I do have some familiarity with this and the project. So the Jewish Community Housing Corporation is a not-for-profit.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give to this board is the whole truth?
I do. Jewish Community Housing Corporation, otherwise known as JCHC. Yes, sir?
Is your name Mr. Nagel?
No, I'm Rice.
Mr. Rice.
Jay Rice.
Jay Rice, thank you.
But thank you for the compliment. JCHC is a not-for-profit organization that builds and owns senior citizen housing on a non-discriminatory basis, and has a number of buildings in a variety of communities. It happens to have two buildings here in the Village of South Orange. This application refers to the property that we own at 219 South Orange Avenue, which is known as the Benebrith Jewish Community Senior Housing Corporation. And what we are proposing in our minor site plan approval is to allow us to install a generator of such capacity that in the event of another super storm, Sandy or the like, that we'll be able to generate power for our residents. And obviously, our residents are seniors, many of them suffer from different levels of frailty, and so the loss of power in a building such as ours is a dramatic problem. So therefore, we have, we submitted this application in order to install this particular generator. It will obviously serve the public good, and that is, it's a great protection for senior citizens, and I believe it has any negative connotation in terms of the zoning or the community in any way. Now, if there are any other questions, what I'll do is I will call our professionals on to describe exactly what we're going to install.
Or do you have any questions of this particular witness?
No.
Any questions from the public? Hearing none? Please go right ahead.
Thank you, and I call Mike Gabriel.
So you did have another witness?
Excuse me?
You did have another witness. We could have used Mr. Gabriel.
Yes, but not, he is a professional, he's not a representative of the entity.
Okay.
Do you want to swear the witness in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you will give to this board is the whole truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name.
Michael Gabriel, G-A-B-R-I-E-L.
Okay, and Mike, just tell the board what entity that you are affiliated with.
Principal of RGM Designs. I also served as the project executive with all interdisciplinary trades for the JCHC project.
Okay, describe the project and the drawings that we have submitted to the board.
What we have is the overall drawing that accompanied the application shows the overall site location, map locations within the area. It shows the, an overall site plan with the specific location of the generator, and then some enlarged details around the, where the generator would be installed.
Okay, and tell the board what the nature, what kind of generator this is.
This is a natural gas generator, so there will not be any fuel storage on site. So there were, this was an interesting decision that the board took from JCHC, in that during Sandy, they were concerned that they couldn't get fuel like a lot of other folks couldn't. So when they decided to go natural gas, that eliminated any type of fuel storage concerns. And also, a natural gas generator is much more clean burning and, and can be more efficient on that end.
Okay, and am I correct that installing the generator where it's going to be proposed to be installed means that there will be no alterations for any portion of the building or any area of the property? Is that correct?
That is correct. We will not modify the building nor any parking spaces.
Okay. One of the questions that the planner, town planner asked was in regard to a shade tree that's located just west of the generator. Am I correct that that tree will remain and will not be removed?
That's correct. So our intent is to, any, any tree that can be left in place will be left in place. Anything that would be disturbed, we would find another home on the site or replant a new tree for it.
Okay. One of the other additional questions was whether the gener, how far the generator was going to be from the building, and would it be farther than five feet away from the building?
That's correct. The generator will be six foot, four inches from the west corner of the building, and the exhaust will be going planned north.
Okay, and to the extent that the board requests any types of shrubbery or bushes around the generator, we're prepared to do that, is that correct?
That is correct, providing the shrubbery and/or trees will not inhibit the operation of the generator for exhaust and/or intake.
Thank you. Board of any questions, Mr. Gabriel?
Have you selected the type of generator? Have you selected the generator?
From a manufacturer standpoint?
Right.
No, we have kept it open specification.
So we don't know what the specs are with regard to exhaust?
I believe, I will double check, but I believe this is a, I can confirm the size of the generator.
I only ask because if the board wants the landscape, then you have to know how much.
Oh, absolutely, yes, understood. I'd be less concerned with the exhaust than I would on the intake side. So I believe on the north side where the police station is, we wouldn't have any issue, other than we would keep the shrubbery away from the bollards, which would protect the generator from vehicular traffic.
Okay.
Any questions to the board?
Is this going, is this a natural gas fuel cell generator, or is this going to be just a standard natural gas?
No, it'll be emergency standby standard natural gas generator, will not be fuel cell.
Is it, is it require, is it a required generator for the facility?
There is currently a generator used for the facility for life safety purposes, so for fire alarm systems and elevator. This is a generator to enhance the safety of the occupants of this facility for general areas for the, as, as Mr. Rice spoke to.
I'm just, it's not a required generator?
No, this is not.
Board, any other questions?
Are there any variances that are being requested?
The only variances that we've identified are some setback variances, and that's why I testified in regarding, which I didn't believe that either, that the negative criteria would be affected. There is a variance regarding the side yard setback, setback, and some front yard setback, but those are two existing non-conformities. Other than that, they're not any.
And the existing side yard is 9-9, and you're asking at 9-5, correct?
That's correct.
Not much change.
No.
No.
Thank you.
I believe that answers all of the questions posed by our planner. Does the rule, do you have any further?
No.
Sal?
No.
I just have one more question, sorry. The foliage you're going to, are you, are you going to look to make sure that it's not invasive, that what you plant? I mean, there's an interest, there's an interest in South Orange, especially from the Environmental Commission, that, that invasive species are not planted, and so have you taken any consideration into what's going to be planted?
We would not plant any invasive species. We would go match what is currently there, if anything is to be replaced.
Do you know what is currently there?
There's a picture of it, it's hedges. Do you have a hedge?
There might, there might be some boxwoods.
Well, my suggestion is that if the approval is conditioned upon planting that satisfies this board, we're happy to. Thank you.
Further questions? Do you have any other witnesses?
No, we rest.
General comments from the public? Hearing none? It's called public closed. Do I hear a motion?
I move to pass the ordinance approving the installation, backup emergency generator for the facility.
Second. All in favor? We need, want to call the rule?
Mr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Reisman?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
And Mr. Lyman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thanks for reading.
Thank you.
I don't know if you're allowed back, as I say.
Mike does want to give up the gavel.
I'll let you gavel out the meeting. It's nice, it's nice to be the observer from time to time. So moving on, there are four items for discussion, two ordinances and two other reports. First item is ordinance number 2015-07, an ordinance to amend the township zoning map in order to set forth the boundaries of the previously approved and existing special district overlay zone located in the university zone. So if I understand correctly, this ordinance was passed at first reading by the, by our Board of Trustees, is now coming before us for our recommendation, and so that it can go back to them for their consideration before taking a vote on second reading. Is that correct?
Yes, it's just an ordinance clarifying the actual dimensions.
Okay. Sal, would you like to take a moment just to edify us on what this is, or is there?
Yeah, the, the university A district that was created many years ago was not defined by a meets and bounds description of the actual boundary. It was, it is located within the university zone on the Seton Hall campus. All this ordinance does is give a true definition of the location of that zone, which I believe came before the board when they were going for one of their applications for improvements in that area. And it was at that time that that zone was actually defined by meets and bounds, and this is, all this is doing is just basically codifying the actual location of that zone.
Okay. All right, any discussion from the board?
Just, Mr. Chair, I just will remind you that there is an ordinance committee of this lovely.
Yes.
Board that either we're going to start using it or we want to eliminate it.
I think that is a worthy discussion to be had, perhaps offline, but, but I do, I do, I do take your point. What action, if any, is required from a formal basis to, what does the Board of Trustees require specifically in this case?
The planning board's review is to determine whether or not the proposed change in the zoning ordinance is consistent with the master plan.
Okay, so, and this should be done by resolution with a recorded vote?
Yes.
Okay, so then, do I have a motion one way or the other to say that this is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan?
I'll move that this be approved as it is, as it is, it is consistent with the master plan.
It's a late hour, so, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, I, I think we can do this by voice vote, I'm going to guess. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's passed unanimously.
When's that on the agenda? At the Board of Trustees, when's it coming on?
I'm assuming it's going to come out in the.
Next meeting?
No, not the next meeting, the one after.
Okay.
Which, I don't know if we're doing that May 28th, 29th.
Okay.
I think we have, maybe the first page.
Okay. Now we're moving on to ordinance number 2015-08, an ordinance to amend the code of the township of South Orange Village, section 92-162B6A with respect to awnings. Sal, you want to?
The current ordinance only allows the name of the business, the logo and the street address. This will allow them to display product names, you know, telephone numbers, you know, a lot more information than what is currently restricted by our current ordinance. The ordinance does allow for, you know, regular signs, wall signs, window signs, things like that, to have more information, but awnings are a little more restrictive. So this ordinance will amend that and allow them to put more information on their awning signs.
Okay. Thank you, Sal. Any discussion or any, yes.
I mean, this has been talked to the planning board before, previously, and even when it came to the above restaurant with the awnings.
Right.
It got so, with the signs in the windows, it got so, it looked like sign collusion. I don't think anybody on the board at that time was ready to allow anything on the awnings but the name of the establishment. I personally don't see any reason why it shouldn't have anything but the name on an awning, because they're allowed window signs or another sign detailing what it's all about, so that's my opinion.
This is actually part of a bigger discussion. There was a, there's a design committee that has been formed. They have proposed many different designs. This is kind of the first step into a larger one, that they're reassessing kind of, a lot of the signage on awnings and windows that's going to be moving forward is being talked about with the business code review as well as, you know, this design committee. And so this, this came from a group of people who talked about it, drew up designs, and they have a good plan going forward.
I'd like to say that if they do have a good plan going forward, I'd like to see it.
Definitely.
As opposed to just voting on something in the ether, because I'm in, you know, general agreement with what Mr. Miller had said just previously, and if there, but I'm all for hearing what the proposal is, maybe it's a great idea.
I think part of it had to do with, there was a lot of new businesses coming in there or putting in awnings, and it was very difficult with the way, you know, if you have a sign up on top, you can't really see the window on some of them, so the idea isn't that panel on the awning that you could put the, you know, you could put down there, so if you have a double awning, you know, one awning has the name of the business, the other one will say, you know, hot dogs and french fries or something like that, whatever it's going to be, because you couldn't necessarily see the window driving by and the awnings more prominent. And I think that's what led to it, and it is part of a bigger plan, and I don't know how you can see it, but because of the timing of businesses wanting to open and have their awnings done when they open, that was part of the reason for the push for this part before doing the other part. Not that I'm saying it's the best overall way to do it, but if you want to allow them to put up an awning and then not make them go back and have a new awning done, you know, a year from now or two years from now, it's bypassed it.
If I'm reading what, I mean, I, you know, a part of the materials that we received indicated that, it doesn't look like it's going to be a free-for-all. I mean, what it says here is very specific, just to be clear. It says, if I'm reading the, you know, this is the last page of the, you know, the actual ordinance itself, the language is changed from "an awning or canopy must not display any graphic other than the name of the business, the logo and the street number." That's where it stopped currently. And the way it would change is "an awning or canopy must not display any graphic other than the name of the business, the logo, address, telephone number and principal products offered." So just, just to be clear, it's not like you could put any information, you could only, there's still limits. I mean, I just wanted to, I was looking at it for my own benefit, but, you know, you can no longer put the street number on, but you can put the address, the telephone number and the principal product.
Street number is the address.
What was the other one? The web address?
I didn't see web address. Address, telephone number and principal products offered.
But it's just.
Well, you take, you take the above, you take the above Ashley supermarket, there's a lot of principal products. I mean, I just think you're going to have signs all over the place.
Okay.
Which I believe they, I believe they got variances for those awnings when, they got variances to do that when they came before the, and the way the ordinance is written right now, businesses can come, can go to the zoning board to get a variance to do that if they want to put more information on. By generating an ordinance like this, it does open the doors to a lot of information.
I wasn't suggesting it was good or bad, I was only clarifying that it wasn't like you could put anything on it. You know, it does have to, it is within certain defined categories, so that's all I was trying to.
I'm kind of curious now that Adam kind of brought up the idea, it's a, it's a bigger plan going forward about pushing, you know, more business and advertising, which I'm all for. I just would like to know what the bigger plan is and how this fits in with that bigger plan. If it's, if it's a necessary component of the bigger plan, it's, unless this is just a rubber stamp and we have no real say on this.
No, no, it's definitely not a rubber stamp, and I think they're, they've been working on kind of the design of signs and what they're going to look at, what they, information they wanted to have on them for quite some time.
Is there a committee that's handling this within the?
It's coming through.
It is.
South Orange Village Alliance is the lead in it, but there's, there's a specific membership of that committee. But I think, I think the ordinance before was a little bit too restrictive when you could just have the name, and you couldn't put the phone number on before, right?
Correct.
And it just seemed to be, you know, I don't really think this goes too far, but I understand, the point is you could go down a very slippery slope and allow too much, but this just seems to allow them to put a little bit more information on there. As for the principal product, obviously, a grocery store is not going to be able to list everything, and it's, it's going to be able to say grocery store versus saying nothing, so, you know, it would say Ashley Market is a supermarket, and, you know, if a bakery opens up and may say cakes, you know, something along those lines, that's, that was really the.
Cakes, cupcakes. Paws.
Well, no, because firstly, it wouldn't be room on it, but number two, it's.
Well, if it's, but wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be more appropriate to say line of business? Then you'd say, then grocery store is it?
It could be.
Right?
I get that, you could say line of business would be more, you know.
Why not website?
I don't know, I don't know why that wasn't included.
Seriously, you could put your phone number on there and your address.
I think the website would make more sense than the phone number.
All right.
UPC code thing, I mean, you could just.
Exactly, exactly.
Find out what's going on.
Q code?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Further discussion? Okay, then, does somebody want to make a motion of some sort?
Motion to approve the ordinance, so forth?
It actually is to say that it is consistent with the master plan, sorry.
Consistent with the master plan.
We haven't seen the master, we haven't seen this yet, right?
This isn't consistent with the master plan.
Oh, when you said, you mean the town master plan? I thought you meant the design master.
Yes. No. The town master plan. Is that, that is what we're asking?
That's right.
Okay.
But it's not consistent.
Then don't vote for it.
It's not consistent with the master plan. Master plan makes no mention whatsoever on canopy sign.
That's not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
We can play with words, but all right, go ahead.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I think we're actually do a, do a roll call vote on this one, John.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Chambers?
No.
Mr. Lyman?
My votes are relevant.
Vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so, fails that, that will go to the Board of Trustees, and ultimately, obviously, they'll take that into account when they make their final decision on the second reading of this ordinance. A report from the Board of Trustees regarding the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Planning and Zoning Committee was canceled again. The only thing we did have is a special meeting, yeah, two special meetings, one on Mary Lawn. That was basically to, just to see, to get an update from where we stood, and really nothing has changed because the parties have not come to the table from Mary Lawn. Adam, the other stuff isn't public yet, right?
Right.
And so, other than that, there's, there's been no change in that, and there has been no, no real update for Onjouon either at this point.
Okay. Is there, is there an update that we as board members need to receive on the current lawsuit that was filed against this?
Could you tell you that, there's motions pending and to be argued Friday.
And who's, who's arguing on, are you arguing on our behalf?
Yes.
That's Mary Lawn.
That's Mary Lawn.
Okay.
And may I ask a question?
Sure.
Master plan, bid, where do we stand?
On the RFP?
Yeah.
I think we're going to send it out next month, after the.
I was, I'm glad you bring that up. I feel like it should go out as soon as possible.
Well, the part, part of the problem is that we have, you know, limited time for the staff, the staff have gotten into other stuff, and also, being that there was a potential for a board turnover, we always feel it wouldn't be fair to put that burden on a different board, since most of the boards are going to be the same. We're going to move forward with it.
Okay. I'm sorry, any other questions for Neil, that address your question about the?
This is going to get right now.
Okay. And last report from the board planner regarding the Irvington Avenue redevelopment study?
I had a meeting with the village administrator and the redevelopment council regarding that case that I was speaking to you about, and there's current, currently, I'm not sure after that. I don't have any, I don't have any definitive update subsequent to that. There may be some action that would be in reaction to that.
My recollection is that you were waiting on certain materials. Have you been provided with those materials?
Uh, no, not at this point.
Okay. So we're, we're still some ways off from being anywhere that this board is going to be asked to take any kind of action in any way, or hold a hearing on this subject?
You won't be holding it next month, that's for sure.
Okay.
And you won't be holding it the month after because there's a certain requirement for notice that's beyond the 10 days of, you know, for a regular application. So you will not be seeing, I don't believe so.
So the earliest would be July, if any, and that's, I'm not saying you're suggesting it'll be July, but that would be the earliest.
You're correct in your assessment that it's not going to be imminent.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else, any other questions, anything else? So before, just before we wrap up, I want to again note the next meeting of the South Orange Village Planning Board is scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, 2015 at 7:30, and you look like you have a question. It's normally on a Monday, but this time we're scheduled for Thursday, June 4th, 2015 at 7:30 PM, so please mark your calendars accordingly. Do I need a motion, I keep forgetting, do I need a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, do I have a second? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much and good night.